Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the last couple of weeks, I know I talk a lot about speeding and safety when we're out on the streets, but we've lost two children in the Omaha area, one in Blair and one in Papillion, just two accidents for drivers who aren't paying attention for one reason or another. You know, I hammer at home with my kids. I certainly wouldn't want my child to be one getting hit, and I certainly wouldn't want one of my children being the ones that hits another. So I've really made a point to tell my children that are now at driving age, pay attention, stay off your phones, make sure when you see a truck or a parked car that you're looking around it or expecting a child or somebody else to come back out. We need to have more defensive driving because it's just absolute tragedy that two children have been lost just from senseless driving and accident. So I would just ask all of you to look at your speedometer, try and keep kids alive. Drive 25, I think, is a good motto to hold. And so hopefully, we will not have any more tragic accidents this school year. And on a lighter note, I just want to congratulate Kimberly from the office, who is getting married on Friday. So. Wish you years of happiness.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in the white banner on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to allow us to better conduct our business, we ask that you please turn off or silence your cellphones. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2020 recommended budget to increase the general fund in the Planning Department by $76,505 for the addition of one housing inspector.
Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This amendment to the budget would add a housing inspector to the 2020 budget, and it's one that I support. I'm one of the co-sponsors on it, so I wanted to speak to it just briefly. And that is to say that I think the department is making a lot of progress in terms of its increased efforts in the housing code inspection areas. I know we have a rental registry ordinance, of course, that passed and will be in effect in 2020. That is important to move forward with and show dedication to. The current budget adds one inspector to start working on that, but I think it's justified to add at least one more to get that going more quickly if possible. But then, secondly, I think that inspector would be justified anyway regardless of a rental registry ordinance. When we look at our history here on housing inspectors, going back to 2013, we had 12 appropriated, and that's six years ago. And this year, we'd only have 11 appropriated if this one is even approved. So to me, the city's growth alone would justify the addition of this position, let alone, you know, hoping to ramp up towards an effective rental artistry that we did pass. So that's my rationale here. I wanted to recognize David Levy, who's here. David, did you want to speak to the Apartment Association's letter that was submitted? You, I know you weren't here for the budget public hearings. I wanted to give you a chance to express their opinion.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate that. David Levy, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of the Apartment Association of Nebraska, which collectively represents over 30,000 rental units in the city of Omaha. And last week, I was not able to be here for the budget hearing. I apologize for that. I got to be with the Fremont City Council that evening instead, so my apologies for that. But just real briefly, the Apartment Association as an association of landlords does support an appropriation for two housing inspectors, two additional housing inspectors rather than one. And the reason for that is that the more efficiently and more effectively the system works, the better that is for everybody involved, landlords as well as tenants. Also, and as Councilman Festerson mentioned, this is certainly not a criticism of the Permits and Inspections Division. They've done a great job, and there was testimony a few months ago during the inspection ordinance about the reduction in the backlog and reduction in the time to clear violations that the department has achieved. But there still can be many inspections involved in resolving violation. There can still be a lot of time involved in that, and additional inspector would help reduce that. It would also, you know, in 2022, the city will embark under that ordinance that you all adopted earlier this year on a program of ultimately inspecting every rental unit within the city. And the units that are subject or have violations historically associated with them will be subject to annual inspections. And so by appropriating money for an additional inspector at this time and helping to clear that backlog before you get to that, you allow that program to start really with a clean slate. Now, of course, it's not going to be an entirely clean slate. There will be violations that come up toward the end of 2021 that will cause properties to be on that annual inspection list. But by trying to clear as much of that backlog as you can between now and then, and hiring an additional housing inspector would help do that, you start that program off on the best foot you possibly can and make it operate as effectively and efficiently as it can. There was some compromise, a lot of discussion across the council as to that ordinance. And if there are, the more outstanding violations there are when that goes into effect, the inspection part of that in 2022, the less that compromise can play out as intended. So I'm sorry to be lengthy there, but that is our rationale for supporting, the Apartment Association's rationale for supporting an additional housing inspector in the 2020 budget in addition to the one that's already proposed, so two total.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
And I agree with that as well, and I think the administration has committed to add two more inspectors in 2021 and additional two in 2022 to be more in line with some of the predictions we thought we'd need in terms of staffing for that ordinance. But I agree, it'd be wise to ramp up earlier and try to clear the decks on some of the COVID issues that we know are still quite serious throughout the city. So with that, I'll motion to approve item number six.
Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at the number 76,000. And to be an inspector, are we offering enough money to get what I call a person who has the ability to be an inspector for that amount of money? Could I ask public works, can you respond to that?
Planning, I believe.
Or planning, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I guess to answer your question, Rich, it's the going rate as far as what the city pays for housing inspectors. So that's what we'd be offering, a new position, and just like the existing positions that we have.
Okay, so I am to assume the 76 includes health benefits, the whole package, or is this just salary?
That's the whole package.
So once you start backing off pension and health benefits, that's not a very healthy number. I mean, I'm not saying 70-some thousand is not a healthy number, but once you start backing off, that salary for an experienced person is not really significant, is it?
Well, I guess I would say it's the going rate that the city pays. Housing inspectors, as a planning director, I don't have any ability to change that rate unless there's some type of job study or overall study on wages across the board.
Well, since in the past, there's been some issues with the inspector, not the individuals, but the amount of inspections, et cetera, et cetera. It seems to me you need to get a very qualified group of individuals in there. I know we have a new leader, and we've seen a change in that. But I just think for an inspector for that price, it's more than reasonable. Thank you.
Sure, you bet.
Councilmember Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I will vote for this. However, I do want to be on record to say that I think the department, the department director, the administration has a plan in place, as was evidenced by Mr. Festerson's comments about the planning going forward to have the proper personnel in place for this plan and the full rollout in 2022. Thanks.
Thank you. We have, oh, Councilmember Melton, just in the nick of time.
Yeah, and I would say the same thing. Just by, we can vote on this. It actually doesn't mean that it will actually be implemented. It just means that we're voting for a placeholder. So I would ask Mr. Fanslaw to see if you need this. As I know, I believe, didn't you just hire four new inspectors? Is that correct?
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, again. About this time last year or about 13 or 14 months ago, we were down to six inspectors. We have nine on board now. We're in the process of hiring a 10th. So, you know, to compare last year to this year, I think that's where you're seeing, and the public's seeing, a better service, more cases being cleared, and better overall continuity within that section. So I guess, you know, we were at six, 13, 14 months ago, and we will be at 10 very soon.
Okay, well, and I'm going to vote yes for this, but I guess with the direction that if you don't need this position, use the tax pay your dollars well and.
Sure. So I guess I'll step back a little bit. When we were going through the numbers, six, eight months ago, we determined that we probably need five new inspectors. So my plan is still to hire those five inspectors over the next couple of years. So, and at the best time that they're warranted. I don't want to bring on new employees and not have them busy or not have the program in place to keep them busy enough to work on that program. So I would anticipate by 2022 that we would have four or five total new inspectors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2020 recommended budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts, community service programs, by $25,000 for PACE.
Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we hopefully all are aware of what PACE does for the community, north, south, east, and west. We hear a lot about different programs and, you know, well, we're not inventing the will or whatever it may be to do better for the community. Well, in this particular case, PACE has invented the will. There are groups that come from out of town to see what they're doing, to see how the community buys in to the amount of kids that are served that truly are the kids that make a difference in the community. Because as every educator will tell you, there's a science behind grabbing kids early through early childhood education. When you get them on the right path, they're set up for success in life. Well, after you hit a certain age, there's other things that you need to do along the way, and PACE is one of them that will grab you and give you that pat on the back that you may need. Now, it is sports oriented, but the stories go a lot deeper than sports. I know the executive director's here. He will have, Rich, come down, please. Sorry.
Gonzalez.
Yeah. Retired Captain Rich Gonzalez, executive director. He'll give you some of the numbers. You will be amazed to hear what PACE does and how many youth, inner-city kids, that they actually serve.
Rich Gonzalez, thanks for having me. PACE, 5105 South 37th Street. And I know we were recently with Councilman Palermo and some of the other councilmen that I spoke with recently at the Champions Day for baseball. The question came up on numbers and who we serve. This year, we don't have our final numbers because we're not done with the program. What we're probably going to end up around 5,000, which will be the highest number since we began with about 150 kids serving the inner city. The breakdown, baseball, we had about 78% male and 22% female. Our soccer league, which is eight to 18 years old, about 87% male, 13% female. Our young kids, micro soccer, we had about 57% male and 43% female. Flag football was at 83% male and 17% female. Our camps that we host, our law enforcement camps for the kids, was about 46% male, 54% female. And then our all-female training academy, which we started last year, we served about 350 females and hoping that their skills get better and their competence gets better in soccer, that we can bring them into the league and have them join the league. And then recently, PACE cheer is 100% female.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, in case you missed that, 5,000 kids. Now, these are 5,000 kids that, who knows what they would be doing if they weren't involved through this group that is giving them what they need in life to succeed. Now, keep in mind, it's not just the kids. Any game, any event that you go to, you'll see the parents in the stands as well. And this is an important part of it because we all know you got to have that person behind you. And believe it or not, well, of course, you know, there isn't always that parent. It could be a grandparent, it could be brother, sister, whoever's there with them. And what makes this special is the involvement from the police, and not just the Omaha police, who has a big share of what happens. It's the law enforcement throughout the community that is investing, volunteering their time, creating that bond to set these kids on the right path, to continue on their journey. And I know a couple of weeks ago, my colleague, Councilman Rich Pauls, had spoke in the beginning about PACE and gave me some credit for coaching a team. And I can't sit here and take all the credit. I do see the head coach in the back. Chief Kanger, if you wanted to come up, you may not be here for this, but sorry, if you're here, you got to come down and tell the story because it's people like Chief Kanger that these kids, when they're around people like him, they just, they brighten up and they live for it, and he gets them motivated and pumped up, and it truly makes a difference. So I can tell you a few stories, but if you got a good one you'd like to share, I'd love to hear it. Don't tell it about me, please.
Deputy Chief Ken Kanger with the Omaha Police Department. Thanks, Councilman. And real briefly, obviously, I've been coaching with PACE for several years, and inner-city kids, the impact it has. But to your point, and the parents is important as well. I've had a young man on my team, and his mother has been around for a long period of time. In the last two years, she's approached me about a drive-by shooting that occurred at her house and gang activity in the neighborhood. When in most instances, she may not have approached law enforcement for a lot of different reasons that we understand that, and we were able to take care of that. This season alone, she approached me about a domestic violence situation that was impacting her and her family as well. Those things are important for us to be able to be involved, get that information, and the impact on those kids. And in last year's flag football season, she thanked us, the coaches, what we were doing for her son. But she said, really, what I want to thank you is what you're doing for the whole community because now his dad, his uncles, other community members, they come down here and support these kids. So just one small story and the impact that the relationships the cops have on the kids. And no mistake about it, those kids impact these cops as well. They see terrible things every day, and they have to deal with a lot of difficult things every single day. But when they sit down there and coach, and they sit down and develop those relationships, and you're walking in a parade, Juneteenth, Cinco de Mayo, wherever you're at, and somebody yells, hey, coach, and you turn, and it's an inner-city kid that you know may have some struggles or that you've seen in housing projects before, it makes a tremendous impact. So we appreciate the support for the program.
Yeah, thank you both very much. And just briefly, too, because I know there's more lights on. When we talk about PACE, when we talk about sports, I'll tell you a quick story about a kid on our team this year. He had never played sports before. He had never played baseball before in particular. So of course, there's that learning part of it. But what you didn't know behind the scenes is that he was a very gifted musician. Matter of fact, he played in his school talent show piano. And, you know, so you're like, well, what made you want to do this? And he knew somebody on the team, and he did. And his mom said specifically, this will give him that confidence. He has it in piano. He's never played the sports before. This is to give him that confidence to know that he can do anything he wants. And whether he continues on with sports or not, it's something he'll always remember to carry on with him. That, hey, I played baseball that one summer. So it's not just the sports, not just the kids who will go on to the next level. It's those other youth that we grab a hold of, who may not ever have gotten the chance before due to maybe the amount of money it costs these days to play sports. So there's that part of it as well. That's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. And congratulations, Coach Kanger, there on the big win. Now's the time to renegotiate your contract for next year, right? I also support this amendment and was pleased to initiate initial city funding in 2016 as the program was just starting to grow. And I think that was a big step for them to get city approval and sort of the stamp of approval there is they went about raising other private funds, which they have done in a really great way and have a lot of philanthropic support now throughout the community. So I think it is important for the city to continue that commitment in that respect and to continue that partnership. And I do think it's a proven mechanism for crime prevention and police-community relations throughout the community. I would, in fact, support doing more than the $55,000 that we have in this budget and that this amendment will then provide, but at least this keeps it consistent from funding from last year. I, too, wanted to tell just a short story about another one of your volunteers, Captain Kathy "Bill Castro" Gonzalez. I was there on the soccer championship day, the next day after the baseball championships with Rich Gonzalez and Tony Españo and a lot of different volunteers and families, for sure. And I was watching a game of older kids that was really close, and it ended up being a tie at the end. There was one female player on the field, and she was brave and courageous and sticking it out the whole game and doing a great job. And then when it came down to a tie, it went straight to shootouts. And the first five shooters went, and it was still a tie. So it went five, six, seven, and eight spots deep, still a tie. And then, of course, it was the female player's chance to take a shot, and you could have dropped the pin in the whole field when she came up to shoot. And it was heartbreaking for me to watch that when she shot, a good shot, it just happened to ping off the post a little bit and didn't go in, and that was the end of the game. And so, as you can imagine, she was quite deflated, and you can tell just by watching with her and her family. But the positive side of this story is, and I think a great example of why this program is so important, I saw Captain "Bill Castro" Gonzalez go over there as one of the only female command leaders on the field that day with the police department to console this player. And I can still tell that it meant a lot to her and to her family. And to me, that's what this program's all about in terms of engaging kids in a positive way, helping them grow. And that mentorship that occurred that day was very striking to me. So I wanted to share that story about her as well. And I don't think there's a motion, so I'll move to approve this amendment.
No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2020 recommended budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts, community service programs, by $35,000 for Keep Omaha Beautiful.
Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm a sponsor on this amendment as well. And this issue addresses the Emerald Ashport issue we know we have throughout the city right now, affecting about 11,000 trees on public spaces throughout the community. And it is everywhere in our parks, east, west, north, and south. We previously had taken our approach to this program with a treatment program over the years to sort of manage the decline, you might say, but then save as many trees as possible. And while that is still occurring with trees we know have a chance of surviving or having some length of tenure, we have definitely moved now more towards our removal program as explained during the budget public hearings and in recent meetings in the last few months. So in recognizing that, and I'm not questioning that, I think that is what most cities are now doing, and there is definitely a public safety hazard to these trees that become brittle. But as we do that, I think it's important now that the funding we had in place to support our Emerald Ashport Tree Program and Treatment Program is now used more substantially for replanting. Because when you lose about 10% of your canopy, tree canopy, across the whole city, that's a major impact to our parks and to the appearance of our city. So what this amendment does is it would double the current city funding attributed to replanting trees. There's about $35,000 right now in the Parks Department. This would add another $35,000, but appropriate it to Trees for Omaha with Keep Omaha Beautiful, who is by far doing the most replanting in this case to address this issue. There is still $710,000 in the capital improvement plan for 2020 that I know might be for equipment and some other things they need. I would actually be supportive of using more of that for this purpose as well. But absent that, I think this amendment's pretty important and should help Keep Omaha Beautiful with its efforts. Before I motion approval of the amendment, I want to have Chris Stratman come up from Keep Omaha Beautiful and talk a little bit about the Trees for Omaha program that you're conducting and the rate of tree replacement that you're seeking and the private funds that you're trying to match.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Chris Stratman. I'm the executive director of Keep Omaha Beautiful, reside at 2327 North 50th Avenue in Omaha. Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, so with Trees for Omaha, it's a wonderful partnership between our organization, the Parks and Rec Department, as well as Nebraska Forest Service. We launched the program back in 2018, in spring of 2018. And since that time, and including what we're going to be doing here this fall, we'll have planted close to about 2,000 trees in roughly 37 parks throughout. Right now, southeast and northeast Omaha primarily, but we're continuing to move with each planting season throughout the city to, again, address EAB or Emerald Ash for, really, in terms of replanting trees. And a big focus of ours is to strategically plant native and underrepresented trees, in essence, to diversify our tree canopy, so to make us more resilient in the future when the next unfortunate pass comes through. What's really nice about this, too, is not only is it contractor-based, but we really incorporate a lot of the neighborhoods and the volunteers as well. The vast majority of it is contractor-based, but we, again, do use volunteers in many of the cases. And we've been very fortunate to work with Parks and Rec Department. Their staffing has been fantastic about this. Everything from helping us identify the types of parks that most need replacement trees because of EAB and the decimation of the ash trees, as well as helping us actually develop the plans for those, too.
Thank you. And do you want to speak for a second about private donations in this respect? And should one want to match this city money with a contribution, how would one do that?
Yeah, so, no, thank you for that. So we've been very fortunate. Obviously, we live in a very philanthropic city. We've raised about $750,000 up to this point from private funding, so community donations, foundations, companies, et cetera. We have not used technically any city funding, but again, we do have a lot of in-kind support, significant support from Parks and Rec, especially in terms of person power in helping with this. But if, you know, if the city is willing to approve additional funding, that does help us when leveraging additional funds or seeking additional funds for matching purposes, knowing that the city's involved or has some investment in this as well. So we do appreciate that. But yeah, that is something that we're pursuing with additional funders to match, in essence, that money that the city would allocate towards something like this.
And should we get to a one-to-one replacement, which would be the goal, this could be a five, 10-year prospect, right?
Very easily, yeah. So, you know, the city forestry division has done the studies, roughly about 11,000 trees that we know are in parks and right-of-way spaces that are managed. Those are trees of different sizes in terms of ash trees. But yeah, so I mean, I think moving forward with that and with our program, we'll be able to plant a significant amount of trees to replace that. Hopefully, we're getting to the point with the funding we have, we're hoping to probably plant about 3,500 trees over the next couple of years, but this could easily be a five-to-10-year program.
Great, thank you. I appreciate your efforts on those lines.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2020 recommended budget to increase the general fund and other budgetary accounts, community service programs, by $63,000 for the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education.
Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. In case you haven't figured it out, my true beliefs and one on behind is kids and jobs. And this is where this stems from. And every amendment has a backstory, and this one's no different. This started over a year ago. There was some disparity in numbers that were brought to me. And I thought, well, how can I make a difference? How can I take what I've learned in life from maybe not having that luxury of taking college right away as a path? Because, believe it or not, many kids just don't have that opportunity. You have a choice to hopefully go. You have a, a choice to hopefully go to college, hopefully maybe go to the military and protect our freedoms that we have, or if not, you're going to go right into the workforce. Now, going right into the workforce, there's a difference. You can go get a job and you could work various jobs and, and make a good living, whatever you're doing. Or we can hopefully train you to have a skill set to improve the quality of life that you have. And this is where this came from. And I brought this up, like I said, a year ago. It was an idea that many took and put into a plan. And when it was put into a plan, it was the guiding force behind where we are now. So as you look at what can we do with these kids, we, we have the numbers, right? If we look at many high schools across the city, especially the one in my district, Omaha South, that is exceeding 3,000 kids, I mean, think about that. Not all of them kids are going to go to college. That's just the facts. So, and not all of them are going to go in the military. So let's get them on a path to improve their quality of life. My biggest fear all along was, my gosh, hopefully they don't move out of my district because this is truly a game changer. And once you teach these kids, once you get them on a path to get in those labor jobs that, back when I was in high school, they didn't stress them that much. It was, well, go to college, and if not, maybe you're not successful. Well, that's just not the truth anymore. These people getting taught these skill sets of plumbers, electricians, carpenters, sheet metal workers, on down the line, they live a very comfortable life now. So as I sit here, and, and each and every week, we have an agenda full of development and construction and projects going around the city, I would always go back to my office and scratch my head and think, where are we going to find the workforce for this? I mean, what can we do? So I grabbed a hold of one of these groups, they put the plan together, exactly what it was designed for, because there's many different paths out there, right? People can take many different options to, to put a roof over their head. But there's one that's going to give you the above aver, above average wage, the benefits you need, and the security you got to have to, to ultimately put that roof over your head. It's the path I took. I mean, I, I had the luxury of going to the military straight out of high school, then going to college, and then I went right into the trades. Now, of course, we want all of our kids to be presidents of every company there is, but if you don't have any employees, what are you the president of? It's a, it's a matter of taking the mass and, and setting them on the right path. Now, sure, this is a new group, but sure, so are every one of these community service programs that are in our budget this year. They all started out new. And some of them, I don't know how we would survive in the city without them. So I would appreciate my colleagues' support on this. Of course, this was going to have to go through a process of getting approved. And I would be doing a disservice if I didn't continue on this path to grab each and one of those kids in my district who should ultimately have a better quality of life, and I feel this is the path for many of them. Thank you.
Move to approve. Roll call.
Harding.
Can I make, I'm sorry, I was trying to get my light on, but can I make a comment for them?
Without objections.
Thank you. So I, first of all, I don't think anyone can deny the, the veracity and the commitment that, that Councilmember Palermo has toward kids and jobs, and I do appreciate the efforts being made here. But I, I think there are, there are many other organizations, community programs that have come to the city and asked for funding, haven't gotten it, or got a reduction of what they got last year, or didn't get anything at all. And while I, I'm very supportive of this program and would, would commit to working with, with a council member to, to get this through the, the normal application process, which I would commit to today, that's, that's where I would like to help you out. So I, my vote's going to be no today, but that's, I wanted you to understand why.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, five to two. Item 10, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2020 budget as, as listed on the agenda due to the areas annexed into the city effective July 31, 2019.
Before the council takes a step for motion, Mr. Curtis, do you want to, or Mr. Indembash wish to remind the folks who may be here or watching why this is on the agenda and why we vote on it every year?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. This is the annexation one. And this one is to set aside money based on the revenue that we get through the annexation to actually get it to the proper department so that they can be serviced correctly in city services.
Thank you. So for people who are watching, wondering what, what all these numbers mean, it's adjustments that the finance department's making to the budget based upon the areas being brought into the city. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve an increase of an additional 1% to the budgeted restricted funds for the fiscal year 2020.
Mr. Curtis, same question, please.
On number 11, this is Steve Curtis, City Finance. As you may recall, at the state level, there are various limits and lids that are directed towards cities and villages, and this is one of them. In our case, we are between 40 and 50 million, maybe even more than that, under this lid. So it currently serves no real purpose in the calculation of our budget. However, we've taken the position that we shouldn't ignore this, use our opportunities when they're afforded us to go ahead and increase this, and as an example of a city that kind of neglected this or had trouble getting this passed. Lincoln didn't pass this, and it began to affect their budgeting process. So again, this isn't really accountable in our process, but it is a state mandated levy lid. And again, we are about 56 million, I believe, under it as of the 19 adopted budget. So it's a little bit of a, just a parliamentary move to make sure that we continue to raise that when we have the opportunity.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve the 2020 budget of the City of Omaha as submitted by the mayor and finance director with the revisions adopted by city council at this meeting.
Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, I think the council did its job this year in, in terms of reviewing the city budget and our public hearings and also in the capital improvement plan that we'll talk about here in a minute. And so I am supportive of this budget, and I think we added some good areas of priority that today as well in terms of the amendments we just approved. I did want to say, though, one thing, which is, we didn't talk about roads today, and I don't want anybody to think that we've forgotten about that because that is one of our biggest challenges as a city. And frankly, the 2020 budget does not address anything in particular in terms of enhancements to street resurfacing or repaving or potholes, but for an additional pothole crew that I think we all support of AEO classification. So I just wanted to make the observation today that that's not something we have forgotten about, that's something we are, are all working on, and but for a greater conversation taking place now about a bond issue or some other mechanism to address that issue, I think there would have been a lot more discussion about that here today. So I don't want folks to think that we haven't forgotten about that issue or that we aren't concentrated on that going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking a little bit to number 12, as I go back up to six, seven, eight, and nine, could I have a, Mr. Curtis, could you explain to me what the account contingency budgetary, what, where does that money come from? Because it seems like we're just pulling money out, and I think it'd be nice if the public know, would know, how much money do we have in that account? And how much have we pulled out?
Steve Curtis.
I'm asking you for him, I know.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. The contingency account, you could think of it as like a miscellaneous expense. We budget to it during the budget process, and in this case, we put 200,000 towards that account. And that is what the council has then chosen to redirect to some of these other programs, including the six through nine.
Okay, so those dollars were put in that account anticipating that that would be the account that if we had some additions to the budget, that's where the money we would look towards?
Yes.
And how much is left in that account?
I believe $495 in this budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So my peers have done a very good job keeping under the budget. No, I just think it's interesting, people should know where, because it seems like all of a sudden we're just grabbing money out of the air, but a count was set aside for actions through six through nine without truly affecting the budget? Can I say that?
From the budget that was presented by the mayor, it doesn't, does not increase the expenditures, if that was your question, yes.
Okay. So we still within the budget, we've just moved some money around for some of, what some of us on the council think is an important additional expenditure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve the 2020 to 2025 capital improvement program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is an amendment requested by Councilmember Festerson.
Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This item has to do with the capital improvement program for the city for the next six years, and it's a little unusual, we have an amendment to it, but it has happened before. A couple of examples would be the Dundee Business Improvement District and the, also the Benson Business District and how those things got accomplished. This particular amendment, I think, is an item I hope we can all support, and I think it's a great project that I know the administration and the Parks Department supports. But it didn't appear anywhere in the plan that we reviewed this year, and I think it's important that it does because I know we all hope to get it done and are working on it as we speak in some respects. So I think it's important that we show this is an objective in 2020, and it's important that it does happen in 2020 for a few reasons that I'll explain here in a minute. So this represents, 13B represents adding the completion of four segments of the Keystone Trail from approximately Ford Street up to Lake Cunningham. This is a product I've been seeking for several years for the biking community and the health and fitness community, and also the surrounding neighborhoods up there that have always wondered why they can't get to where they need to be on that trail, and it's broken up right there in that respect. But I think it's taken on added urgency in 2020 because, as we all know, the project that will circumvent Lake Cunningham and build a new trail around that entire lake, a six-mile trail, with philanthropic funds has been announced, and that is to be completed in fall of 2020. And then also in 2020, we'll be doing our total reconstruction of Crown Point Avenue that comes right past Northwest High School, one of our first complete streets in the, in the, in the city. And we'll add a trail on the north side by Northwest High School that would also presumably connect into this, this extension. So to the extent we can work on this and get these four segments done in 2020, it'll complete the Keystone Trail all the way north to Lake Cunningham. One could then go all the way south to Sarpy County and also connect into Offutt Air Force Base, and it will be a major improvement to our trail system overall and therefore our quality of life. So my intent with this amendment is to get this on the books for 2020. I think it is doable in 2020 through a combination of either private funds, city bond funds, and/or NRD participation or other partnerships. This is not unusual way for us to get something like this done. So it's my intent to have this show on the plan and then start working on it to get it achieved. I do know that Larry Bradley's here from the NRD. Larry, you also, this wasn't a specific topic at the public hearing on the CIP, but if you wanted a chance to express an opinion upon it, please come down. Yeah, and the NRD is the Natural Resources District, for those that may not know, and Larry is a commissioner on there, or director, I guess they call you. And you're a frequent, frequent partner in our, of course, projects like Lake Cunningham, but then certainly the trail system as well.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, city council, for having me and Councilman Festerman, Festerson, asking me to address this issue. I am a director on the Papua Missouri River Natural Resource District.
Director Bradley, can we have your name and address?
Yes, yes, sir. Larry Bradley, 6068 Country Club, Oaks Place, Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. And I am a director on the Papua Missouri River Natural Resource District. However, I am not representing the full board here today, but I am a citizen and I represent the, the district that Councilman Festerson is referring to, and it's a long time coming. And we'd really like to see these trails connected, for sure. If you know the area, there's been a big economic boom, lots of houses going up and so forth, and where my wife and I, just from a personal point, as we've walked our, our dogs, you know, down busy streets like 60th Street, their cars whizzing by up to 70 miles an hour. So we'd like a place just three minutes, five minutes away from our home to go walk our dogs. And I know there's many citizens within the same area that feel the same way. And again, I do not speak for the full board, but the Papua Missouri River NRD and the City of Omaha have a long history of cost sharing on projects, and trails is definitely one of them. So I do my best to get my fellow board members to vote on to try to also get funding in 2020. There's a, although I wouldn't have to do much lobbying, I don't think, I think most of them would agree, so to get this done, so that's, there is a, I think in March, in the Brookbench City Planning so forth, they know the deadline for trails assistance that the Papua Missouri NRD has. And so we definitely entertain that on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for your support and the partnership on something like this. And then I also wanted to just note, another enthusiastic call I got when this was first introduced was from Senator Hilkeman. I don't think he was able to make it today, but he, as you may know, is an avid cycler and realized the importance of this project and wanted to add his support, too, so I'd always note that for the record. And with that, I'll yield the floor, but move approval.
Thank you. I'll second that. Councilmember Melton.
Yes, thanks. And you know what? My, my only problem is, is we're putting this on there, and I know you want transparency, but the problem is putting it on in 2020 without the funding, I think, is telling the public that this, we're going to complete it in 2020. Mr. Bench, could you clarify, currently in the, in the CIP, am I correct, for this year, we're doing the design work for the trail?
Brookbench, Parks and Recreation, that, that's a fact. We, we are currently, right now, for 2020, we have about $250,000 internally earmarked for the linear, for the design and the engineering of that connection. We've been working on that Lake Cunningham project for a long time, and we did not want to put this project in there until we knew for a fact that Lake Cunningham was going to be built and that was going to come, that that was going to happen. It's a, it is a great extension. We certainly want it. But currently, right now, in 2020, we only have 270, or $250,000 earmarked internally, which we will add to the CIP for 2020. only have $250,000 earmarked internally, which we will add to the CIP for 2020. Moving forward, until we get those engineering numbers, we really can't apply for grants. We have done a long, a lot of cost sharing with the NRD and some other opportunities out there, but until we get that, we won't be able to do that until we have firm numbers. Building that connection from Lake Cunningham all the way back to Ford Street is going to take some time, and that is not something that we could get, that project couldn't get done all in 2020. We can get the design going, the engineering going, and our goal is to connect back underneath the interstate. It's a complicated four chunks of trail, and we have to acquire some land, there's some issues on rideaway that's going to come up, it's going to take some time, just like all trails do, none of them are very easy, and we'll work through it, it's in our master plan, we certainly want to do it, but it's not all going to happen in 2020, it's impossible. So we will keep moving forward, but for what we have in our capital improvement for 2020 is what we need.
So would it be better, I mean, just for the public, so that they aren't expecting something to be complete in 2020, wouldn't it be better to put this in 2021?
That would be correct.
Under the line item, as opposed to 2020?
Yeah, and probably '21, '22, '23. It's going to take time to come back. As we're looking into it, like I said, it's a three to four million dollar connection, and until we knew for sure that Lake Cunningham was going to get completely redone around, we hadn't spent a lot of time on it because it wasn't a top priority in our trail system. Now that Cunningham is done, it will get completed, it is, we've kind of moved it up over a couple of other connections, just because we know that that is a huge, you know, plus for the city of Omaha to be able to go all the way around Lake Cunningham. But like I said, it is going to have to be spread out. We will cost share and apply for different grants, but all those take time, and again, to acquire the land, we're definitely going to have to push some of this off into future bond years.
Okay, so it would be, so even if, even if we pass this for 2020, we're basically kind, I mean, it's like a false promise that we're making to the public.
Yeah, I don't want people to think that that connection's going to be done in 2020 because it's not.
Okay, so, and it's on your goal, and in fact, you just made, I mean, you gave me a presentation last week on it, so I know how serious you are.
Correct. Correct. I've been working on the Lake Cunningham project for 10 years, and it's very important to the Parks Department, for all of our staff that's been working on it. We think the connection's great, we're updating the campgrounds, it's going to be beautiful. We know this is a very, very important connection, but again, I mean, just to give an example, the South Omaha Trail took nine years to build. I don't think this is going to take that long, but when you have to acquire land and rideaway, there's a lot of permits that we're going to have to do going underneath for the interstate, and then some other crossings on major intersections and going underneath them, it is going to take some time.
And so I guess what I would like to do is just make a motion that not be for 2020, but to be put in 2021.
Is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this substitute motion? We do have lights on the original motion.
Yeah.
Did you want to speak on the substitute motion? You're first in the queue. You want to speak now?
Well, really, I can't, I just, sure.
Okay, council member Pauls, then council member Festerson.
The issue, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to motivate people to doing this, and I, by your words, Brooke, I'm assuming that you're quite motivated for this.
I don't think anybody wants to see this connection more than me.
Okay, and that's, I think that's the message that basically we're trying to send, is that, in a number of people's eyes, this is a very, very important thing, and by listening to your, to what you have told us, that I, it's high on your priority. And I would like to add one thing, I have a feeling I am the, now, I could be stretching here, I am the only council person on this current staff that has either walked or ran that trail all the way from, is it Freedom Park? Is that, is that what it's called, Freedom Park?
Democracy Park.
Or Democracy, yeah, I'm on the right, from Democracy.
Right theme.
Yeah, right, from Democracy Park all the way down to Sarpy County. I dare say I'm probably the only one.
Wrong.
You ran it? I'm not on a bicycle, no, no, that's easy.
Yeah.
That's easy, okay.
Not on the same trip, but on different trips.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, council member Pauls. Councilman Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I don't object to a 2021 proposition, but I do think it has to be in the plan, and we do need to commit to doing that now, because I've been trying to get this done for three years, and every year, the story I get is, yes, it's going to get done, it's going to happen, and then it doesn't. And it's never been in the official city plan, and I'm concerned that would happen here again, which is why I'm pressing the issue here today. I don't question Mr. Bench's commitment to this project, but I will say, not to put him on the spot, but I will say that the conversations I've had about this in recent weeks don't reflect what was just said here today in terms of what could get done in 2020. In fact, I was committed to me that we are acquiring property as we speak by the Public Works Department from Fort up to that first stretch of property, and that we are, we were going to build at least Cunningham to Sheffield, which is the northern part of this trail yet in 2020. So, you know, if, Mr. Bench, if we're saying now is you need more time to build these partnerships and come up with a funding strategy for 2021, and maybe that's the practical reality of Cunningham itself getting done in the fall of 2020, I'm not opposed to that, that still makes sense to me, and it's still pretty good timing with Crown Point Avenue, but I don't want this to slip. I think it's important we put a marker in the sand today that we're going to get this done, and we're going to work on this all together and get it accomplished to make this a huge improvement for our city. So that's a long way of saying I won't object to the substitute motion of 2021, but to the extent we can start working on this now and getting some things done, I think we should, and I'm going to keep pressing that envelope.
I would just add my own experience from the South Omaha Trail Connector, which links the Field Club Trail at its southern terminus at Fenton to the Keystone Trail over south of the railroad trestle, south of I-80 and about 62nd or so. And the way that came into the CIP was initially proposed for year one, and then it didn't happen because it kept getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. Unlike, actually, much alike this one, we had to negotiate with the Union Pacific Railroad for rideaway, we had to negotiate with the Department of Roads, we had to negotiate with homeowners, we had engineering challenges in the design of different portions of the trail, and that really, that project became a nine-year slog. And if you don't start, and it's not in the priorities, and it gets pushed back, then all of that negotiation, all of that planning gets pushed back another year. And then there's nobody tasked in the departments to reach out and get those conversations going, and appraisal processes organized, then later ordered, and then right-of-way leases in terms of getting the rights from the state or in some, I don't know if there's railroad up on this stretch, but I believe that it does set this as a priority for the city. Council member Melton is wise to point out to people, this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but I think it needs to be a priority today to get these other things going. Otherwise, it'll just be another year out there, and I think, I don't know whose district this is, but I know from the people who I represent in District Three, who now have a connection to the Keystone Trail. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bench, but I think when you did your last counter in the peak times, peak seasons, there's hundreds of people now per hour using the Field Club Trail, going south into that trail, and knowing how the explosion and use of the trail system in my district happened with this extension, I just don't, is it going to be your district or is it council member? Both. Your constituents are going to love it, and knowing that you're working on it, they're going to, they're going to love you for it. And everybody loves Brookbench, so they're going to love you even more. Council member Melton.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask, Brooke, I mean, I think the commitment's there, he's already starting the work, we just have to get the engineering and we have to get the cost estimates, so then we can go out and get the bids. So really, all I'm trying to do is not putting it off a year, it's starting now, it's just being more realistic so that people know when they can expect it. And it doesn't mean that even though we put it in 2021, we're putting it in there, but we don't have the funding yet. So again, this is going in without a funding source. You know, I, I'm confident with Mr. Bench at the helm that he's going to work to get funds and things, but, Mr. Bench, did you want to, did you want to respond to anything that was said?
Sure. Brookbench, Parks and Recreation, our goal is to start some type of construction next year. So we're, the majority of the engineering hopefully will get done in the beginning of the year, we're starting that internally, we've been working on that now. So in the perfect world, we'd like to see something being done construction-wise by next fall, but again, until we can get the engineering, we know when we can start it, it goes out to bid, all those things take time. So our goal is to, we're going to keep, keep moving as fast as we can, but the money that we have in our CIP for 2020 is what we're going to need.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, just one last comment too, and as I indicated, I'll support the substitute motion, I think this is a good plan going forward as long as we keep those wheels moving right now. But I would also note, it's not unusual for a CIP project to straddle years, it happens all the time. There are products in 2019, 2020, that could move back to '21, '22, for whatever reason, a backconstruction year, or funding issues, or, you know, any number of things that can straddle years, and that's okay. So that could happen here too, but that's why I want to get this started now and actually have construction then in 2021. And I'd observe two other programs, if we're concerned about funding sources, two other major projects, much bigger deals than this, are in the 2021 CIP right now with no funding source either, and that would be the Police Headquarters Program for $80 million, and the downtown library for $12 million, so compared to that, this is really, really shouldn't be a challenge of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. First, we'll have a vote on the substitute motion. If that passes, then that'll be adopted. If it fails, we'll proceed to vote on the original motion. Madam Clerk.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13 is approved, or as amended.
Council member Melton.
Second.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for South Farm Replat Two located southwest of 144th and Pacific Streets.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Joe Flaxdood with Lampre Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road. We're the civil engineers for the project here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions that you may have on the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Town Center West located northwest of 204th Street and West Center Road with waivers to Section 5399 sidewalks along the west side of Turner and 10th Street from West Center Road to Gold Circle, and Section 5382B cul-de-sac length, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kellen Hyman with Olson, 2111 South 67th Street, Suite 200, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106. Here on behalf of the applicant to represent the prelim plat, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Spruce 180, replat one located southeast of 181st and Spencer Streets, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Council Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the project applicant about zoning land development, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Pacific Street West, replat 15, located northwest of 203rd and Pierce Streets, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, representing the applicant, making myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 17 is approved, seven to zero. Items 18 to 23 can be considered together for Poppleton Park, replat three located northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Davenport Street, planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item 18, an ordinance to rezone this property from R3 District and GC District to CC District. Item 19, an ordinance to rezone this property from R3 District and GC District to R5 District. Item 20, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC major overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 21, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in an R5 District and CC District for this location and to approve the development plan. Item 22, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Poppleton Park, replat three with a waiver of Section 5384A lot depth from 100 feet to 80 feet. Item 23, a resolution to approve the final plat for Poppleton Park, replat three.
The public hearing on items 18 through 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, representing the applicant, along with myself, Kendra Ringenberg with DeVorke Law, the attorney representing the client is in the audience as well. To give a little vicinity of the...
Hold on just a second, while they, there you go, just bring it into focus.
The project is one and a half acres and is located in the highlighted area shown in the map, is the northwest corner of Saddle Creek, or northeast corner, sorry, of Saddle Creek Road and Davenport Street. It is currently zoned, has multiple zonings within that location, there's a portion of the property that is zone GC, and then in the northeast corner of the property, it is currently zoned R3. The property previously included nursery, previously included a nursery and five homes along the north boundary. Currently, that nursery has been relocated to the north side of Wakely, just to the north of the property, and the homes have been cleared. As you can see from the agenda, there are many different aspects to this project. It involves a rezone of the GC to a CC zoning with an MCC and a PUR overlay on lots one and two, and then a rezone to R5 and lots three. It also includes the replat of the property to three lots, and previously, there was a vacation and purchase of alley and rideaway, which has already been approved, so with as small as this piece of property is, it has a lot going on with it. This is the proposed site plan for the property. On June 25th of 2018, we met at St. Celia Church, we had a neighborhood meeting with about 40 attendees. Overall, it was a great meeting with a lot of questions and interaction by the neighborhood and their, other residents. The main concerns were traffic and project access. Previously, there was access shown closer to Saddle Creek Road off of Davenport and off of Wakely Street. We have moved those access points as far to the east as possible to address some of those current concerns. We have also reduced the square footage of commercial on the property and added some residential units on the east side. Not only did this reduce the amount of traffic, it also kept the property within the city of Omaha's current comprehensive plan. The plan shows two separate commercial lots, be lot one and lot two. Amongst those two lots, there are two buildings anticipating three different tenants. Then lot three on the, on the east side will include proposed five townhomes, which will have front porches addressing 44th Street. This project also includes screening on the east and west side through landscaping, and then screening on the north and south with both landscaping, and there are proposed screen walls along Wakely and Davenport to screen the parking lots. With this, the MCC overlay, this project architect will meet the higher standards of brick and transparency as required on those buildings, and this project also includes excellent pedestrian connectivity. So I'll make myself available to any questions that anybody has.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 18 through 23 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, Counsel.
Item 24, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Cellar 44 located at 2835 South 170th Plaza, Suite 206. A's communication from the Planning Department regarding building permits for the outdoor area.
The public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Wendy Roth for Cellar 44, 4813 North 126th Avenue, Omaha, 68164.
And Rich Barmentler of 16024 Franklin Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. You're aware you'll need to get permits before you build the outside area?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero. Item 25, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Geno's Bar and Grill located at 3821 North 167th Court, Suites 160 and 165.
The public hearing on item 25 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Bailey Lord, 310 North 187th Court, Elkhorn, Nebraska.
Happy to answer any questions. No, you're not?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right. Well, I'm glad you had to change your heart. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, seven to zero. Item 26, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Go Puff located at 115 North 40th Street with the same restrictions currently in place of drivers completing responsible server training, no sales after 1:00 p.m., and no onsite sales.
The public hearing on item 26 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neill. I'm with the law firm O'Neill Heinrich, 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. And basically, this is a corporate restructuring, dropping the licensed operations down to a subsidiary, same restrictions that we've worked out with the neighborhood before. And so we're asking to approve the reorganization without really operational changes. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Before we take roll call, just because this is common for large corporate entities is they have a local entity that then has management that then goes through the fingerprinting and all that background check. So this is no different than what the larger entities do, so roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council rules of order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items 27 through 34 were held on August 20th, 2019. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
We will be removing item 57 from the Resolution Consent Agenda, so the public hearings on Items 35 through 56 begin at this time. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Oh, come on down. I want to cut a lawyer off.
Thank you. Mr. President, Council members, my name is Cynthia Epstein, 11516 Nicholas Street. I am here just representing White Elephant LLC. Doing business is my title. It's number, item number 36. Just that we are having a new manager. We have filed an application for a new manager, and the manager is here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Counselor Member Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, too, item number 56, Director Fanslaw, if you could tell me a little bit about this. Obviously, there's some big-ticket items today, but I didn't want this to get lost. If you could explain this briefly.
Yeah, sure. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. There's a stipulation in the Omaha Municipal Code that certain permit fees can be waived if that waiver is sponsored by a City Council member. So the item on the agenda today is to waive building permit fees for those property owners and victims of the recent flooding this year. And there are some stipulations that they must apply for the permits by the end of the year, but we felt it was a good step forward or, you know, showing some relief for the folks who were affected by the floods and waiver of these permit fees.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to say also, there are some people who haven't been able to get home yet from the flooding, so that's a small gesture, but much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on item 57 begins at this time. Before we have a comment from the public as proponents, we'll ask Deputy City Attorney Bernard Indenbosch to present.
Thank you. Bernard Indenbosch, 1819 Farnham Street. As I indicated this morning, Omaha Municipal Code 10-242E allows the city to reimburse moving expenses for prospective employees, but requires approval by the council. As I have indicated, it occurs periodically, doesn't happen often, usually about once every couple of years. Just by way of background for this request, one, Tim Young, who was the previous Human Resources Director, was hired as the Human Resources Director. He left his position as the Labor Relations Position Director vacant, and shortly thereafter, Mr. Grauman was hired as an Assistant Labor Relations Director in order to perform some of those duties. And as a matter of reality, Mr. Young maintained the negotiation duties that go with the Labor Relations Director, continued to do that with Mr. McQueen, as this council is aware, since he made presentations to the council. But the remainder of the labor relations duties were performed by Mr. Grauman, including disciplinary investigations, grievances, investigations, going through the grievance process, overseeing the safety and workers' comp divisions, oversaw the city drug testing process, and reviewed and revised city policies. And he left in June of 2019. I think fairly well thought, he was very well thought of when he was here. A lot of people were disappointed that he left. He made the decision at that point to move with his family to Florida. After Mr. Young resigned a week ago, Mr. Grauman was asked to return to the City of Omaha's Provisional Labor Relations Director, the position, to hold the position that Mr... the classified position that Mr. Young vacated when he resigned. I'll note that there isn't anybody in Human Resources currently qualified to perform those particular duties. And Mr. Grauman expressed interest in returning to Omaha to take those duties, but was concerned about the cost of relocating his family twice over a couple of months. And he was willing to do so if there was some help, and so there was... the request was made that he would be reimbursed his moving expenses as a result of kind of having to move back here after only being gone for a couple of months in order to take this position. So that's the background for the council, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you cover his status at the time he left, that he was a provisional employee?
I stated he was a provisional Assistant Labor Relations Director the entirety of his time, from the time he started, I believe in January of 2018, to the time that he left in June of 2019.
And did you cover whether we've had anyone at that level or below, had their moving expenses reimbursed before, to your knowledge?
I think I've mentioned that we've done it a couple of times.
At the director level?
We've done the director level, and we've had one division, one person, I'd say arguably lower than this level in the past. I believe we had a parking manager whose expenses were reimbursed, but that's the only one I can recall that occurred.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing now to the public for any proponents on this item. Are there any opponents on this item? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Indenbosch Law, if I could, please. The dates that, I don't know, Mr. Grauman, this isn't directed towards him at all.
Sure.
But the dates that he was provisional, was there an opening for him to be a permanent employee?
Uh, so...
What is the process for that? Why was he provisional for so long?
There was not in the, I do not believe in the 2018 or 2019 budget, a position of Assistant Labor Relations Director. But obviously, with Mr. Young's ascension to the Human Resources Director position, that left a vacancy in the Labor Relations Director. He didn't want to fill that particular position because he wanted to hold it for himself to go back into. So I believe he used the money from not having a full-time Labor Relations Director to allow himself to fill up, to have an Assistant Labor Relations Director that was provisional.
Okay, thank you.
So that someone could perform those duties that he no longer had time to do as he was doing the duties of the HR Director.
It seems like quite a bit of money to bring somebody back. I'm sure that's what the cost would be. I guess the only thing that's holding me up is we're bringing him back provisional again. What securities do we have that he's going to stay on full time once he's brought back provisional?
And I think equally important is, he's moving here under the hope that when the position is posted and he's able to compete for it, that he succeeds. Otherwise, it will have been giving up a job in Florida and taking a job here. So I know from, I have not spoken to him about it, but I'm aware that others have. He's firmly committed. He enjoyed his time here. He enjoyed working with people here. That's why he was willing to take this risk of moving back a couple of months after he So there's certainly some risk, I think, on both people's side.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Indenbosch, did I hear you say there was no Personnel Board-approved position of Assistant Labor Relations Director at the time that the previous HR Director brought Mr. Grauman in, into that position?
I don't think there was a council-funded Assistant Labor Relations position in the budget. So Mr. Grauman was hired as an Assistant Labor Relations Director, and he used money... there was money in the HR Department's budget because they didn't have, there was a vacancy at Labor Relations Director. So he came in at what had previously been a subordinate position and did it provisionally. And I don't know whether, why Mr. Young didn't take an action to add that position to his budget. My guess is he had other priorities.
Maybe I wasn't clear. I was asking, you know, we frequently on our agendas have employee jobs and classifications and descriptions that come to us for consideration, and there's usually someone from the HR Department, I believe it's Mr. Bagley, who comes down when those come before us and tells us, well, this is a new classification, and here's the salary range, and here's the justification, and here's...
So there is a classification of Assistant Labor Relations Director?
That's what I was asking.
I'm sorry, it was created back in 2002, '07, 2008, and Mr. Kerrigan actually held it initially.
Okay.
In that position, or it continues to remain out there, it just hasn't been filled.
And there was no budget funding for that position?
Correct.
At the time Mr. Grauman worked it, but Mr. Young used money from his former position as Labor Relations Director to fund the unfunded position?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Now, is that all on the up and up?
I think it's perfect, it's allowed by the city code and is quite common for those types of things. The Personnel Board, in fact, had to approve the leave of absence for Mr. Young to leave his position, and so they considered that. And in fact, at one point in time, Mr. Grauman received a multiple-step increase, and that also went to the Personnel Board for consideration and vote as well. So I don't think there's anything about that that was inappropriate or not permitted by the code.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it kind of sounds like Mr. Grauman joined the city and, don't want to put words in your mouth, but was he kind of strung along, believing he would have this job and then didn't?
I don't know what the comm-communication was. He certainly came to the city. I think there, he had a desire to stay here. I'm not sure what he was told or not told, but there never was money in the budget to fund both positions, so it would have required some prioritization or an increase in funding in order to be able to accomplish it.
Now, this one might get tough, but I think I heard you say that Mr. Grauman did the employee grievances. He did everything but the labor negotiations with the collective bargaining units. Is that correct?
For the most part, yes. Mr. Young occasionally would do an investigation, but for the most part, Mr. Grauman did the job of the Labor Relations Director position.
Who handled, during the time Mr. Grauman was employed by the city, complaints or grievances filed by employees within the Human Resources Department? Him or the Director?
I would, within the department, those typically would go to the Director, and then the Director could assign them to somebody else to investigate if needed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
No.
Gray. Mr. President.
No.
Motion failed, three to four.
We are with, if there's no objection, we'll call up for public hearing, Item 60. Following the public hearing on that item, we will then proceed to vote on Items 58 through and including 60, if 60 is still relevant.
Item 60 is an ordinance awarding a contract to FCC for OPW 53641 for the yard waste collections, spring and fall, with an estimated annual cost of $1,494,000 for a five-year term. A's communication received from West Central Sanitation.
Before beginning the public hearing on Item 60, we'd ask for public hearing comment from the city's Public Works Environmental Division Director, Mr. Tyler, and Mr. Sands from FCC.
Thank you. Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works Department. Like to state that the Public Works Department recommends the award of this spring and fall yard waste contract to FCC Environmental. FCC is the lowest and best bid for this work, and in conjunction with the FCC two-car bid on the agenda today, comprises the lowest and best bid for the delivery of solid waste and yard waste for the residents of the City of Omaha. I'd like to add, in response to some questions and requests for information that were brought up this morning in pre-council, I would like to add that FCC was looked at extensively with background checks, reference checks, and safety checks. with background checks, reference checks, and safety checks. Nothing in any of these reviews was found that would tell us that we should not be doing business with FCC. In fact, quite to the contrary, we found FCC to have excellent records in terms of safety and performance. I will submit to the council for the record the background check that we completed, or excuse me, the reference check that we completed for FCC with respect to their Orange County hauling contract. This was provided to you previously, I provided that to Mr. Dowding. I'm going to resubmit that so you have that on record. Orange County indicated to us that FCC's performance is a scale of 10 and 1 to 10. And this is on a contract with over 86,000 households served. So again, in closing, I would like to wrap up with restating Public Works Department, along with the mayor, recommends the award of this contract for unlimited spring and fall peak season yard waste to FCC Environmental to go along with the recommended award of the FCC two-card bid. I will remain here to answer any questions. Inigo Sands is here to answer any questions you have for FCC.
Inigo Sands, address 31 Player Point Drive, Spring, Texas. Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name is Inigo Sands, as I said before, and the CEO of FCC Environmental Services. I'm here today in place of my Director of Collection Services, Dan Brazil, because over the weekend, there was a death in his immediate family. And he also suffered a severe back injury on the airline flight on the way back and was transported by ambulance to the Houston Hospital where he still is. Today is a big day for the City of Omaha. Your decision will impact every Omaha household for many years to come. Omaha residents are passionate about their yard waste, I can tell you that. Under our two-card proposal with our seasonal supplemental yard waste, residents will be able to have unlimited yard waste for 12 weeks in the spring and fall. This allows residents to recycle as much yard as they want without additional expense. This option allows the most flexibility for residents because the three-card proposal, once the cart is full, residents are back to feeling bag after bag after bag and paying extra for those additional bags. Because the 96-gallon cart is equivalent to only three wastepaper bags, since every bag is 30 gallons each. Only FCC from the beginning proposed free recycling of all existing trucks and recycling containers, currently used by the Omaha residents, again, at no additional cost for the residents and the city. We know from our experience in other cities that this is an important part of a transition in a car system. We know there is skepticism about the continued commitment to recycling yard waste and this is why we are willing and able to execute this contract for 10 years to match the main contract or give the city the unilateral option to extend the yard waste contract five more years. We are flexible and can do whatever the city decides is best. We have proposed both a two-card and a three-card option, both provide the largest resources for trucks and staff. We believe we are the best and lowest option, whether you select the FCC two-card or the FCC three-card option. During the last three years, we captured more than 700 photos from all parts of the city. Our team of experts visited Omaha dozens of times to fully understand the needs of the city. Then we crafted a proposal and processed to best serve the residents. Our promise is to do the job right from the start. So to summarize, our proposal also includes the efficient and timely pickup of Omaha's trucks, recycling, and yard waste, creating jobs, more jobs than any other option proposed. We will hire local and develop a local call center staffed by Omaha residents. We will establish our Omaha Midwest, our Midwest headquarters here in Omaha, which in turn equals even more jobs. Free recycling of all existing trucks and recycling containers, again, at no additional cost to City of residents. At FCC, we take care of our workers. We are proud that FCC drivers in Omaha will be operating new state-of-the-art trucks. Our drivers receive above-average wages and benefits and because we have the most resources, we'll have shorter workdays, reducing fatigue and promoting safety. Plus, this allows to effectively react to weather and other unexpected developments that might occur. We are the only company to also offer a new technology called Third Eye, a six-camera video recording system inside and outside all our trucks that provides increased driver safety and instant trash removal verification, which is key for customer service. As you know, we have years of experience serving cities the size of Omaha and larger across the United States and abroad. We fully understand the challenges and opportunities in servicing a big city. Omaha has different needs in different parts of the city. That's why a district-by-district approach with a variety of trucks ensures that your trust, no matter what part of the city you live in, is picked up when it should be, no matter the weather or other issues. It is important to me that you know that we don't just operate in the city. We become ingrained in it. Each year, we give back millions of dollars to organizations and nonprofit groups in the cities where we share. We also give preference to local contractors and vendors to help grow Omaha's economy. Omaha will become our home, just as it is your home, and we want to make a difference where our employees live and work. Thank you to the administration for your due diligence over the past three years. Thank you to the City Council members for your thoughtful consideration of all the information we have provided to you. When residents set out their trust, they expect it to be picked up in a timely, professional, and safe manner. After numerous studies, surveys, and citizens' feedback, it's time to make the right decision for the city and residents. With your support today, we can give Omaha residents the excellent services they expect and deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. We'll now open up item number 60 for public hearing from the public in general, calling for any proponents. Mr. Love.
I'm Preston Love. I live at 6021 Villa De Sante and I speak as a strong proponent for the recommended choice on the solid waste contract. There is a lot of moving parts that you all have had to evaluate. I surely want to first commend Public Works for the work that they've done and your patience and steadfastness to stay with this. I think the time has run up on you, but I surely recommend. My reason for standing, however, is, quite frankly, I had, was a proponent of the whole idea of the, all four contractors because what it seemed to mean is jobs in the community. But in this particular case, I stand to say that I am extremely happy with what might be the choice for FCC because jobs is what my community needs and this contract will offer so many opportunities for jobs. And I'm here to publicly say that I will become as active as wanted and needed to facilitate the job development in all of the community, but especially so for North Omaha unemployment needs. And so I do that. And I want to also commend the company and its management for making the decision to build facilities here in the Omaha area. So I wanted to just be a strong advocate for those reasons, the jobs. It's something that's going to help my community and ultimately help the entire community. Thank you for your space.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on this item? This is the seasonal yard waste contract. Welcome Sierra Club.
Yes, thank you. David Corbin, Chair of Sierra Club. It's a little awkward to figure out what's going on where and how we do this. I just want to reiterate that the Sierra Club supports the longest possible time of yard waste in, to keep it out of the landfill. We've got fires in Amazon, we've got fires in Russia and Alaska, we've got a dire climate emergency and the last thing we need is more methane. So if the supplementary was passed, it definitely should be for 12 weeks and not eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Are there any other proponents on item 60, public hearing? I guess this is the Sierra Club's cleanup man, Mr. O'Hara.
Hello, Michael O'Hara for the Sierra Club, 6035 Benny Street. Environmental areas, one of the first things they're taught you is think global, act local. And the city is going to have strategically act at this time at the homeowner's garbage bin. We would want you to have three bins and want you to pick up as much of the yard waste as possible and so in favor of a seasonal pickup with composting. In discussing these contracts, you considered risk management and you should always be doing that, and consider what is lowest and best. And I would suggest to you that one of the things you should consider is you have a statutory mandate to pick up all solid waste and in the contracts, you, if you don't pick up all, then one of the things that might happen is you get sued and I'd like you to entertain, who's going to pay the bag fee after you've signed a contract that picking up the yard waste includes a bag fee and the homeowner is not going to be paying the bag fee? Who would be paying that, as you consider? In terms of doing your job, you're supposed to be stewards of taxpayers' dollars and seek out efficiency. Generically, that does not mean get less and pay more. And each of these contracts, if you don't pick up all of the solid waste, involves getting less. Because this contract involves picking up much more of the yard waste, would want you to adopt having the seasonal unlimited picking up of yard waste and composting of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the opponents with Don Williamson.
Mr. President, can I submit comments to the clerk?
Absolutely. They may be any part of the record. In fact, if anyone has written comments on this item, they want them part of the record, just to hand them to the clerk. You may proceed.
Don Williamson, 1423 Ferry Lane, Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota, 56201. Mr. President and City Council of Omaha, we thank you once again for allowing us time to visit with you about this major project. At the end of the day, when we set aside all politics, this is really what is about is best for your constituents, the citizens of Omaha and for the city. This is the end of a long three-year process with multiple studies and time spent listening to Omaha citizens and community groups, polling of residents regarding their desires for Omaha's next collection contract. The bids and the service options originally received were in response to the original RFB. These are options that are most likely to satisfy the constituents' desires, being the most well-researched and the most thought-out, the most time was spent on the original RFB. We believe the options in front of you today are as follows. If your constituents desire the lowest bid across all categories, saving taxpayers up to $20 million over the course of this contract, then a fiscally conservative vote will be cast for a West Central Sanitation plan. If your constituents desire eco-sustainability, stable composting, a reliable 10-year-plus contract, an environmentally friendly vote will be for West Central Sanitation as well. We are a known entity. We have a 40-year, spotless track record of safety, reliability, and a solid work ethic. The selection of any option other than West Central Sanitation today will result in Omaha paying more money in exchange for less service. If the third cart is an issue, the original RFB allowed for residents to have the third cart removed from the premises at no cost to them. That was included in the original RFB and it included three years of research and polling from the residents. We believe the choice is clear. Stick with the original RFB, save money, provide 35 weeks of yard waste service to constituents, which is what they desire. We encourage selection of our option 1A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Mr. Larry Store, followed by Mary Ruth Stegman.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'm against this proposal. I think it's entirely too confusing. In a way, I think it's manipulating the citizens of Omaha to ultimately approve the three-card system. And I don't have room for three carts. I don't want to handle three 96-gallon carts. I don't want it stored in my garage because I need a car in there and it would smell in the garage and filter through the house. Let's keep it a simple plan like we've got right now. Thank you.
Mary Ruth Stegman, followed by Kathy Jeford.
Mary Ruth Stegman, 4512 Pierce Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm speaking for OTAC's Environmental Sustainability Action Team. President Jerem and City Council members, it's hard to decide whether eight or 12-week period of unlimited yard waste collection is better or worse in terms of methane production from the landfill than to have yard waste collected for 35 weeks. The 35-week period is a new limitation, but it makes sense since during the winter, there will be little to no yard waste. To help me understand this comparison, I made a chart with information that I have So, under the three-card option, there will be 52 weeks minus the 35 weeks in which compost being collected in 96-gallon container go to the landfill. And I'm assuming the 17 weeks will be December to April, in which there will be little to no yard waste collected. Under the two-card and supplemental, under the 52 weeks, there will be 12 weeks of unlimited yard waste going to the compost, 40 weeks in which compost will go to the landfill. Now, to be fair, take out the 17 weeks here, in which there's little to no landfill, yard waste going to the landfill. So that gives us 23 weeks during the growing period of yard waste going to the landfill. That's almost six months. So in theory, the three-card option would result in no yard waste going to the landfill. This is the best option. And according to Don Williamson's, from West Central Sanitation, his letter to you on August 7th, the three-card option is the most economical choice. Now, I'm speaking for myself and not OTAC, but I have walked dogs in my neighborhood for 35 years, so I have a sense of the amount of yard waste that is being deposited. I estimate that the 96-gallon container collected weekly would be adequate for most people in my neighborhood. Again, I want to thank all of you, Public Works, for all of the work that you've put in, in the selection of this yard waste, or this garbage contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Jeford, followed by Spencer McGruder. If you've not signed in as an opponent and wish to speak, come down, let the clerk know. You're on deck, Mr. McGruder.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman and President Jerem. I'm Kathy Jeffers. I live at 5706 South 173rd Avenue in Omaha. I'm representing Omaha Together One Community, otherwise known as OTAC. I'm on the Environmental Sustainability Action Team. And we believe as OTAC that composting yard waste at Omagro's facility weekly through the third cart system is the way to keep most residents' yard waste out of the landfill. We do have some concerns about the supplemental plan. Is it physically possible to pick up all the residents' yard waste on Saturdays only for eight to 12 weeks in the spring and fall? My next question is, could hiring temporary help to staff the trucks be able to get those routes learned before it's time the 12 weeks is, is over? And my third question is, will the timing of the supplemental plan be up to the discretion of just the Public Works Department without any input from the council or us residents? And my fourth question is, if some of the residents can't fit all of their yard waste into the 96 yard container, do they have an option of purchasing an additional cart as those who need more, more space have the option of purchasing another garbage cart? I thank you for all this long and hard work that you've been doing all these three years. The decision that we make today will affect and reflect on us, the next generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Spencer McGruder, 1524 Cummings, President Jerem, Council members. I am opposed to the, the ordinance to award to FCC, not because I'm opposed to FCC, but the process. This is a supplemental award and it supplements OPW 53407. This is a supplemental award, and it supplements OPW 53407. As I had stated before regarding 53407, because these 58, 59, and 60 are appropriations that are past one fiscal year, you have to be in compliance with the Home Rule Charter 5.17. Because of that appropriation. However, if you award this contract for the supplemental to FCC, you will be in violation of the Home Rule Charter, Section 5.16, which clearly states that the award, the basis for the award that you're going to vote on is the competitive bid that was open in public. The ordinance, the draft ordinance that the Public Works is bringing forward is not representative of the competitive bid that was open in public. There was a change that occurred after the bids were open. That causes me a problem because if we don't support the sanctity of the sealed bid process, what are we doing? The purchase, the Home Rule Charter is clear. The purchasing procedure we need to follow. And it's not, and it's not, you know, when it works for this contractor or not, it has to be followed in all cases. So with that, I would say that you would have to refrain from voting for this contractor's, this contract to be awarded this contract and the other, the main contract, which is number 58. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler, did you wish a minute or two of rebuttal?
Sure, thank you. In regards to following the city charter, there was a competitive bid for this yard waste contract. We opened those bids sometime in July, I believe. It was open, it was open to anyone to submit a bid. We talked to all the local haulers. We talked to the haulers that submitted the bids on the larger contract. I believe we had meetings with over eight or nine haulers to make sure that they were aware of the bid. And so we did follow our normal competitive bid procedures for this bid. It's not a supplemental in terms of a change order. We did not do that. It was a separate competitive bid process.
For a separate contract?
For a separate contract.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed. We're going to have comments, questions from council members at this time. In case anyone's curious as to the procedure following discussion on this item, I'm advised by the city clerk, when we return to item 57, 58, that if there are any motions on amendments to item 58, we are required to take up those motions before any motion on the underlying vote on item 58 itself. So to keep ourselves out of trouble, if you have parliamentary inquiries, you'll have to ask the clerk, but that's what I'm told. Council-
When would be the appropriate time to ask the clerk?
Let's, well, what I'll do is, once we finish with discussion on this item, I'll open it up for the clerk to explain her position and then questions from council members. If that works for everybody. Because this is, this is like a breaking news flash for me. Okay. Councilmember Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Several months ago, I started on what I call a little bit of a journey. The problem is, I visited, I went to Minnesota, I visited one of the companies. I was thoroughly impressed. So since then, I have been really searching and trying to find out more about them and also their competitor. Because I think this is an important decision because this is, is my understanding, if this goes for 20 years, I've been told it'd be about a half a billion-dollar adventure. And to the citizens of Omaha, in case you don't know, that's a chunk of money. So that's why I'm really, I think we really need to think through the total process, and this has been, has taken some time. This morning, I gave Jim some questions that I have about some of the issues that have been brought to my attention dealing with the FCC. And I gave them to him this morning so I wouldn't catch him off-guard this afternoon because most of us don't want to be caught off-guard. And I asked him, number one, to find out the safety records of both companies. I had some concerns about some of the lawsuits on the one we're looking at today. And I have a couple other issues, but if we can get those addressed. And I also asked, since there've been so many proposals in front of us, West Central gave this on their packet they gave us, but I wanted to put them all together so they could be placed on the screen so the public can see what this is. Because as my understanding, our intention, for the most part, is to go to the lowest bidder. I have been told we are, but I want to make sure that's clear to the public. So Jim, I'm going to, could I have you come up now and I'll ask the questions and hopefully we can get some answers and I can feel a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah, so I guess before you have questions, these are the safety records, and I could submit those to the clerk?
Right, yes. But I want this to be verbal between us. And I'm not asking for pages of it, but just break them down into categories or whatever so the public could understand without having to go read them.
Sure. So that's why Jim Key's here, and he can probably provide better information on the safety records than I can. So he's going to be able to answer some questions.
Jim Key, City of Omaha Public Works. So what we looked at is we basically pulled the DOT report for FCC, and we also pulled it for the other bidder. And we kind of looked at how, what the DOT had listed on their website and for the past two years. There was nothing glaringly wrong with either company. I mean, this is an industry where you've got a number of trucks on the street. They're traveling miles and miles and miles a day, hundreds of thousands of miles within a year. They're going to rack up some kind of occasional accident, some kind of traffic violation, things like that. So as we looked at that, there was nothing that seemed out of the ordinary for this type of work.
Well, then the reason I'm saying, because I think I see Joe Jordan had a, on his news forecast a couple weeks ago, about, I'm not saying anybody's guilty, but was that, did you not see that?
Yeah, that was actually, that was, excuse me, Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. Actually, that article, or the story by Mr. Jordan, that was first run back in April.
Yeah. Isn't, it's not true? I mean-
No, it's, so there was, there's, you know, and probably FCC can respond to that incident in Orange County better than I can. But there have been incidents brought up, and we've looked into them. And there's incidents from every company.
Right. I'm not naive.
So if you want us to respond to that specific incident, I'm going to have to ask FCC to respond.
No, I'm counting on your information right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's been brought to my attention in this period of time. There was one fatality, five injuries, FCC in this same period of time. The other company had zero of each one. I know it's a business that things are going to happen. I get that. But I'm surprised that even the thing that Joe Jordan reported, that it didn't catch your attention and you bring it to us.
It did catch our attention. We didn't bring it to you because when we looked at all the information and the information from both sides at the time, we saw this as looking at other companies of their size that submitted, which Waste Management's record included a couple deaths.
Right.
We looked at that in accordance with-
Mr. Hold on a second. If someone has a device that's pinging, and I assume you're not searching for your iPhone, someone-
Yeah. We looked at, and the way we looked at that, and Jim Key can talk to this, and how we looked at the DOT records, is if you look at the number of complaints in relation to the number of customers served, in relation to the statistics with this industry across the country, there is nothing out of line with any of the companies we looked at, the four original bidders. We looked at that information upfront. We deemed all four companies that bid on this as a company that would provide the safety that is needed for the residents of the City of Omaha.
And I understand, I know this is a business that there's great possibility of injury. I get that. But when I see, when I'm using a podcast, but I see something like that, and nobody from Public Works says, hey, because we have meetings. For the general public, we, we're broken down into different committees in groups of three. So the information is given us in groups of three. So if I'm not on that particular committee, I do not hear that, nor do you. Because you're not allowed to be in there because groups of three. Groups of more than three, we have to make a public record. I'm just saying, to me, this is a half a billion-dollar effort. And I would just think all that kind of stuff would be brought to our attention, so it would release on us. So I wouldn't be asking, what you might be thinking, why does he ask these ridiculous questions? But I'll go on from there. And I'm not saying they're dangerous, but I just think that's good information to know when you're making comparisons. Okay, now, then I'll move on. This company that we did not vet initially, WSC, we did not vet them, did we? Because we thought they were too small.
No, not too small. We did not believe that their bid was too-
Too good?
We did not believe their bid was provided enough resources for the city.
Okay. Now, they have, my understanding, and another thing too, that, well, since we're getting into that, we said, my take on it was they're too small, they can't handle it, and number two, they didn't have the finances. They have made every effort to prove to us they did. But we dismissed that company automatically. And I'm not blaming you guys. If I'm going to be blaming, if I use the word blame, it's the person who did all the studying for the City of Omaha. I think that's the fallacy, but that's enough of that. I, I'm going to go now to the lawsuits. And I gave them to you so you would have a chance to look at it. What about the one dealing with the, I'm going to pay the third one, because you do have my-
Yes, and according to the lawsuits, and you provided me a list of websites.
Yes.
And we believe that if you would like a response according to those, it would best come from FCC.
I'm asking, you are the one who vetted them. I would assume that some of this information had, somewhere in the, when we're reviewing this, we do do some checking.
Yeah, I can say that as part of our checking and vetting, we didn't go out to websites from across the world to look for articles. That's something we did not do.
And they may, they may, FCC may be totally innocent. I'm not saying they are. But if these can be found by Googling, that's, it's a half a billion, excuse me, a half a billion potential contract.
And so I'm going to have to say that we relied from every one of the four companies, we relied on the probably on average over 300 pages of information that they provided to us in the bid submitted package that included information on safety, information on places where they have worked in the past, including the size of contracts where they have worked in the past. We did not do an extensive website review.
And I get that, but it's not like you had to do it to 100 companies. How many bids did we have? How many companies?
We received four bids.
Four bids?
Yeah.
And I took the time to get in my car and drive up to Minnesota. So to me, having somebody go to a computer and do some little bit of investigation doesn't seem very, and we paid a consultant to be doing some of this, giving us information that we wouldn't have these issues. This is too big of a project to be just say, well, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. I'm not blaming you. I'm blaming the person who gave us the information. And I hate to use the word blame, I'm just questioning.
So let me go back to, there were four websites that you referred me to.
Yeah, and they were wrong.
And I'm going to tell you, one, and I didn't submit it, but it was from Orange County, and it was questioning their service in Orange County. And I'm going to submit for the record a piece of information that was previously provided to you. This is a reference check from Orange County.
Right.
They gave FCC a 10 out of 10 in their reference check.
Not questioning that.
So that's for that one. I'm going to-
Tyler, for the record, who in Orange, this is Orange County the entity that's giving this reference? Or this is just somebody you called in Orange County and asked them how they're doing?
The names on the piece of paper just provided.
Thank you.
Okay, and I know this is way out, but the one is investigation, which I have no idea about. Central America, where FCC is alleged to have bribes, in Costa Rica, Panama, and Guatemala. I don't know if that's true or not, because, but if you would have pulled that up, that would have given some indication. And there's a question in Barcelona. That has, that has apparently been settled. There's other allegations. I'm just saying is, I think we probably should have done a little bit more investigation. Okay, now, I'm going to move on now. What about, I asked you to provide all of the data so we can show it to the people.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to rely on a chart prepared by Jim Douding, as he was helping out through this. So if the numbers are wrong, it's Jim's fault.
James Douding, City Council Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
Just for the record.
Thank you.
Can you enlarge that?
So here's, here's the chart that was provided by Mr. Douding. And this is the chart of what you're voting on today.
We make, excuse me, Mr. Tyler, we make an announcement at the beginning of these meetings for people to turn off or silence their devices. This is the second time. The next time, we'll have the sheriff remove the offender. Thank you.
Is there any way getting that a little bit larger so the public can see it, or is it just my bad eyes? Can you, I'm going to ask you to read the figures on the last one, the total cost.
Sure. So the merit, listed first is the mayor's recommendation on Agenda Item 58, two carts, with the first year annual cost of, or excuse me, I'll just read the last column.
Last column.
Total cost, $24,185,046. And then on Agenda Item 58, Amendment of the Hole C, FCC, which is their three-cart bid, the total on that is $28,647,320. Agenda Item 58, Amendment of the Hole D, that's the West Central Solid Waste Two Cart Bid, that total is $15,590,954. Agenda Item Number 58, Amendment of the Hole E, West Central Solid Waste Bid Three Cart, And Agenda Item 60, the FCC Peak Season Yard Waste Bid, is $1.494 million.
Okay. But so the three-cart, WCC, is, how many million, is there a difference between that and the two-cart extended?
You mean WCS?
Yeah.
That's approximately $2 million.
$2 million?
Less. Less, that's approx-
Approximately.
Approximately $2 million less.
Approximately 2 million dollars less than the FCC Two Cart Bid, including the cost with Peak Season Yard Waste.
Okay, that's 2 million a year.
Correct.
Okay, so over 20 years, then again, that, if you look long range, you know. I appreciate that, and, and like you say, I, I just think that initially we were steered wrong in my estimation. Apparently not, because this is what I call a David and Goliath adventure. And David doesn't always win, you know, for those of you who do read the Bible. And that's what I see here, but I think the public ought to know that, that we are really trying to make a sincere case here whichever one that you vote for. The, you're telling me to do the two cart unlimited yard waste in the spring and the fall is 2 million more than FC, FCC in their three cart bid?
Yes, that's correct. I, I would like to say though-
Yeah, go ahead.
That the Public Works Department said from the very beginning that no matter which bid was chosen, we recommend FCC as, as the company that we want to recommend.
Yeah, and I agree with you. You have held steady on this, and I commend you that, because some of it, especially, may have been throwing some pretty hard rocks at you, but you have been, you've been coming back. But I just think that, that this is such a important vote that we really have to think it through. And, and like you say, I know you worked hard on it. But what encourages me, and I would tell my peers, we need to get away from having our meetings, in our small group meetings, like we have planning, Public Works, we have those as division, where only three of us in there at a time. We need to somehow open those up so people can take a look at that. And I'm thinking, I'm just talking out loud here, is I'm familiar with the process where they've had, not the public there, but they've had somebody from media there to at least be watching and what's going on. Because I think that maybe they would see some of the questions we have now, we try to get them answered earlier. I mean, that's one thing. But again, I, I commend you for taking my, I don't know what I would call it, but I, but I, I know I was putting some pressure on you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask you a couple of questions about the supplemental?
Sure, yes.
Thanks. I don't remember exactly who it was, but I just wanted to, she brought it up, I wanted to make sure it was on the record as well. In the supplemental, how would the, can you clarify how the pickup process would take place? On what, specifically how the, logistically how it takes place?
Oh, oh, sure, sure, thank you. And, and I, I believe a member of the public spoke that it would occur on a Saturday. That is not the case.
That's what I learned.
Yeah, the, the supplemental yard waste will happen on the normal day of collection. And I, I think the other point of clarity, if I could make, is some people were saying it's either eight or 12. No, that's not the case. This is a 12-week bid, eight-week minimum. So if for some reason, over time, if the city sees that the 12 weeks are not warranted based on how the yard waste is coming in, we have the flexibility to change that length of the term. But the, it's an eight to 12 week bid, so that's just for clarity.
And then could you, could you also go over the process then of notification to whoever that contractor selected is for that service? The notification process for scheduling on that, for those spring and then the fall?
Sure, so, so we have, I believe in, if I'm correct, I believe we have 90 days. We have 90, we have to provide the contractor 90 days in advance of what their schedule will be. So we anticipate, based on our historical records of when a majority of the yard waste is accumulated, that we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be work, providing this service in the April, May, early June timeframe in the spring and in the October to late November timeframe in the fall. So 90 days prior to each one of those seasons, we will sit down, or much prior to that, we're gonna have to make a decision on when those initial weeks of service will be. We think it's gonna work much like the current spring, thank you, Jim, spring cleanup, where there's quite a bit of involvement with the neighborhoods. We have a kind of a publicity campaign that gets out there so they understand when things are gonna happen. So we'll be working with the city council, hopefully quite extensively, so you understand that information and can get it out to your residents.
And you talked about the flexibility, and again, that could change, that period or those timeframes could change year to year as, as you see that maybe the, the majority of that collection might be earlier, might be later on the whole. But it allows that flexibility within the contract.
Yeah, and we, we did that for a reason. We haven't done this before. We can tell from historical records when the yard waste comes in. But things are changing over time, and it seems like the leaves are falling later every year. So, you know, we're gonna have to be able to adapt every year to those conditions, and we wanted to build that flexibility in the contract.
Which leads me to kind of a quick aside, hopefully funny. Then hopefully some of the trees we're planting in replacement of the ashes aren't pin oaks, because those hold their leaves forever and drop them forever.
But you can, you can, in the spring, go ahead and send those our way in the spring.
Okay. And then also I wanted to talk about the, the length of the commitment of this agreement. It's, and, and how that could be exercised, or who has the ability to exercise the option at the end of the initial term?
Sure, so again, I'll, I'll just say the, and I provided this in, in the memo this, this morning, but you know, we understand that a number of you had some questions on this, and you know, the, we fully intended for 10 years when we put this contract out. We just didn't think that it warranted 20 years like the other one, because conditions can change over time. And so, so we, we fully intended a 10-year contract. We divided it into five years with a five-year extension. And we have the sole discretion to execute the extension of that contract, which we fully intend to do. There would have to be some greatly unforeseen circumstance for us to not move forward with that.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Then I had just maybe one quick question for a while. Mr. Nembash, there was also some question as to whether or not the bid process has been appropriately followed. So if you wouldn't mind addressing that issue. As it relates, and I think maybe Mr. McGruder was the one who brought it up today, but at least as it relates to the supplemental yard waste package, as well as the initial bid package that, the RFB that went out for the solid waste collection.
Sure. I don't think there's any question that-
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Bernard Nembash, Deputy City Attorney. There were two bids that went out. Both of them followed the process that's required by city charter, city code, and state law. Obviously, as, as you know, the recommendation on the first, there's a recommendation for somebody other than the highest bid, on the, on the lowest bid, I'm sorry, in the first one, and we understand, apologize, that the, there's a supplementary bid, which is a separate level of service, and that went out, and that was also done properly. I don't think there's any question that both those processes, the bidding process as required by the charter and the code was followed in both instances.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
No further lights. We'll proceed back to Item 58. Some council members have lights. You can trigger them if you want, wish to speak. But before I recognize anyone to speak from the council, I'd ask the city clerk to explain her procedural requirement for how we proceed.
Sure, so Item 58 as presented, that is the main motion. Once it's disposed of, voted up or down, it's done. You can't take up any amendments beyond that.
And so because of that, your ruling is if there are motions to be made on any amendment, and they receive a second, they will be considered and voted on before the underlying proposal?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't mean there's gonna be motions, but if any council members have questions on that procedure, the clerk and Mr. Nembash, Nembash are happy to answer them.
I do have a question about that.
Councilmember Harding.
Thank you. So this seems a little contrary to how we've dealt with these in the past. So either we've dealt with these in the past incorrectly, or we're doing something different here. So I guess I would defer, or with no disrespect to the clerk, ask Law Department for their opinion on this.
I want to make sure I understand what, what we're talking about doing. We're talking about voting, voting on the individual amendments for the whole.
If there are emotions.
If there are any amendments.
Correct, yep.
And-
But, and I'm sorry, to make this conversational, so that we get this done, I hope correctly. Am I to understand that if we were, if there was a, a motion on 58, the original motion, and it did not pass, that we could not take up any of the amendments after that?
Correct.
Again, I'm sorry-
There's nothing to amend at that point, as I understand.
Right.
Well, but there are amendments of the whole.
Right, but that presumes there's something to amend. It's, it's been explained to me.
Correct.
This is somewhat unusual in that it's not been brought to our attention before, but it's, as I understand, the clerk, when she handed me the note to explain, that's the way it should be handled. I think it's because there's so much discussion as to what might happen today that's been going on for so long. I think she wanted to make sure she got it right.
Correct. And I think in the past practice, we have taken up amendments of the whole before the main motion.
You'll, you'll have a motion, and then you'll have an amendment, the whole amendment of the whole is generally disposed of prior to the main motion.
Correct.
Or is always disposed of.
Are there any other procedural questions before we recognize council members for discussion on the Agenda Item and Amendments? Seeing none, Council Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we have all been talking about this for a very long time, and I'm gonna get off subject just a, a little bit to bring awareness to it. Last week, I was sitting in a, a meeting, and we were passed notes. Not like passing notes like you did in grade school, but that sounded bad. We, we were passed a card, and it said, describe something you're doing in your life now that would be different from a change 20 years ago, that you're working on in your life, because obviously we'd all have changes. But the first thing I thought about was solid waste, obviously, because this has consumed us. And it wasn't the, the part of, just the overall solid waste. It was the fact that we're here now, and we're having these heated discussions on different, what the different carts are gonna hold, because I feel we haven't looked forward enough on actually self-perform, self-performing as a city to have this. And I have to get this out here, because otherwise, 20 years from now, whoever gets this contract, we're gonna be sitting here talking about the same thing. We have Omagro, which we know has a cult following. The problem is, it doesn't make any money. And, and the, the place we send it to hasn't been open as much as it's been closed over the last few years. And then we have recyclables, on the other hand, which, if you've been paying attention, the market's not very good, and we don't know where we're at on that. So before we move forward on where we're at today, the serious conversation is where are we gonna be as a city putting this facility in place for us to run so we can stay out of these situations and maybe save some money? And you can say, well, Vinnie, where are you gonna get the money for that? We got 22, 24 million a year that we're talking about right now. So I'm sure there's some money to be saved each and every year by coming up with this joint facility that we could run on our own to make a difference. Okay, so I had to get off that my, my chest. So now we're back to where we are. Number 58, I, I have to thank everybody involved. This has consumed all of us, not just the, the clerk in her office, Mr. Douding in his office, but obviously Public Works, Mr. Tyler, Mr. Key, even Todd Fitzher who sits in these Public Works, Public Works meetings. Each and every week, we meet weekly, in case you didn't know, and obviously Director Stube for coming forward with the recommendation they did. I've asked more questions than anybody. Some of them not very nice, and they've all been answered, regardless of what side or what company they were referenced to. They were answered, and they were brought forward. So I want to send a, a thanks out to, to those individuals and, and groups that have worked on this, because keep in mind, every time we delay something or move something, we show up for the next meeting, but there's so much behind the scenes that has to be done, so thank you for that. And then even moving a little further back, I want to thank the mayor as well, because I'm at this point, because of a phone call months ago, when I think dinner was being cooked, and I told my wife, okay, I, I might be a little late for dinner tonight. And it was the discussion of, Vinnie, what have you heard? How are we gonna move forward? What are your constituents looking for? And honestly, this is where it comes from. It isn't from me. I, I know what I want. I want my trash picked up each and every day. And my teenagers, when my trash wasn't picked up, I promise they want it picked up each and every week that you're supposed to pick it up too, because they don't like dragging it back up the driveway. So that's always stuck with me. And I've, I've downplayed the fact of, well, it's just putting it out and picking it up. It kind of is, but there's so much technology and so much money and so much effort behind this. So the conversation with the mayor was, well, Mayor, here, here's what I've heard, here's what I've stressed, here's what I've talked about in my meetings. And when it comes out, this proposal, Number 58, it's exactly what I asked for from what I heard. It's not gonna please everybody. There's gonna be some problems with the yard waste part of it. And I, and I discuss this all the time when I talk to people about education, education, education. When I drive by and see yard clippings out by the curb, there's a problem for that. There's a reason we see the, the peak times of pickup for this, and how we know based on tipping fees when this is gonna happen, and this is where that supplemental yard waste part came from. So at the end of the day, a wise man once told me in public service, you got three rules. It's safety, it's your roads, and it's your trash. I won't say who that is. He's sitting by me. But anyway, at the end of the day, if our job is to have, and, and keep in mind, many people, they're like, yeah, we recycle, not as much as we should. Yeah, we, once in a while have something at the curb, but not as much as we should. At the end of the day, people want their yard, their solid waste, their garbage picked up. And for me, that's what I'm gonna hear about. No matter who wins this contract based on how this goes, you're gonna have complaints, because people are gonna be involved in change. It's gonna be the carts, there's gonna be a problem, but I guarantee we cannot survive trash sitting there. And for me, it was my vote before with FCC putting the least amount of risk into picking this up. Because at the end of the day, we want our potholes fixed. We want our parks mowed. We need our trash picked up. So with that, if I could, not getting out of line, I'd like to motion to approve Agenda Item 58, to be clear, which is the FCC Two Cart Award.
Okay, Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little bit along the lines of my fellow council member. I, I used to use a line that Fiorella LaGuardia made famous as mayor of New York City. And I, I bastardized it a little bit during my campaign, but the gist of it was there's no Democrat or Republican way to clear the streets. And my bastardization of that was there's no Democrat or Republican way to move the snow, clear the streets, or pick up garbage. And that's really what this is all about. It's basic city services. And it's making sure that those basic city services, and we are stewards of the, of the taxpayers' money, and making sure those services are delivered comprehensively, consistently, and at the best cost to the city in return for their dollar. Early in this process, I was, I was a proponent of, of West Central. I truly believe that every time that they were asked a question, they responded, and they responded quickly and thoroughly and convincingly. they responded quickly, and thoroughly, and convincingly. And when the notion of having a supplemental pickup for the yard waste, unlimited yard waste pickup in the spring and the fall, when that came in, then my decision was, I thought was more clear at that time, the decision was, which is a better system for the city of Omaha? Is it a three-cart system with the 35 weeks of pickup, or is it a two-cart system with a concentrated pickup of yard waste in that spring and fall, six-weeks period of the spring, each spring and fall? And in listening to constituents, I think about every place I went over the last couple of months, I've asked the question. I've gotten mixed results, but I would tell you, I think that the majority was that the two-cart system probably worked best for most people, and with the spring and the fall cleanup. And when you look at that option, then I believe FCC not only really is the lowest bid at that point, but it's the lowest and best bid. And I know the three carts, you know, I've also said that with that 35-week pickup, you have 17 weeks where you have a 96-gallon bin sitting on the side of your house unemployed. And two carts for a number of people might be hard to put in their garage or on the side of their house, much less three. And I truly believe with the two-cart system, with that supplemental pickup in the spring and the fall, truly best serves the residents and the citizens of Omaha. The one other side note that, and Mr. Palermo also brought this up, with education, I must say, it's a little perplexing to me that there are some who were more proponents of the three-cart system, and in the summertime, when we have probably a little bit less of that concentration of pickup for yard waste, we should be encouraging more people to mulch. And we should be encouraging more people to do some of those things to keep those green and brown materials out of the landfill. And I think with the education component, along with the unlimited yard waste collections in the spring and the fall, can help alleviate some of those issues. So, I'm happy to support the motion made for the two-cart systems and FCC, along with the supplemental yard waste pickup that we'll probably be dealing with here in a few moments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. This has been a long process, and I think everyone in this room is feeling some trash fatigue. And I'm sure members of the public are too at this point, but I agree, this is an important, a really important decision, and it was important for the council to weigh in on these proposals and vet them. And as Councilman Paul has recognized, it is by far the largest contract we'll deal with, singular contract we'll deal with. This is at least $250 million, and possibly as much as $500 million over the next 20 years. When I say that, I also want to note that what's proposed here today is our 10-year contracts, but could be extended for 10 years. And 10 years is a long time, especially when we're talking about technology on vehicles, environmental sustainability, landfill technology, all these things. So, regardless of what happens here today, I think it's important we really look at this again, and not just automatically think this could be an extended situation, because so many things could change between now and 2030. As I started this process, of course, a priority in trash service is efficient and timely service. Everyone expects that. But I think we should expect a lot more than that, and I think we need to really consider doing the right thing environmentally in these contracts. And for me, that option is pretty clear. It means separate yard waste and composting to the greatest extent possible, and then also increasing the recycling rate to the greatest extent possible. We have an 11% recycling rate in this city, and that's dismal. So, we really need to be focused on that going forward, too. And I also want to say, regardless of what decision happens here today, I want to thank my colleagues, because I think we have improved the conversation. We started back to a bid that was selected and sent to us. It was a two-car option with co-mingling of yard waste, and virtually nothing new along the lines of handling yard waste, or handling composting for that matter. And that failed 6 to 1. That was a pretty powerful message, I think, that we were listening to people who care about this, and that we are interested in making this better for the next 10 years, and insisting there be a better answer as it applies to yard waste. And that's been a lot of our conversation in the last couple of weeks. Also, last week, I thought was valuable to vet out the question about what happens to people's current cans, all the plastic that results from 500,000 cans, approximately, being disposed of in the city once something goes into effect. To me, that was overlooked in the bid process, and it was important to vet that out last week like we did, and get both companies on the record as to how they'd handle that. And I thought they both had sufficient answers, but that was not part of the initial conversation either. So, I respect the motion, but my position remains the same as it always has, which is, given the options we have before us today, I support three carts for capacity and separate yard waste collection reasons, and I feel strongly about that position. And with that, I'll yield the floor to others.
Thank you, councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Melton.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I have to say, this is, normally, I don't have a problem making a decision. I'm fairly opinionated, as most of them men sitting up here would, could attest to. This has to be one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make. And when I've gone out and talked to people, I mean, I've been at grocery stores, at churches, I mean, just when I'm at the counter at the grocery store, or by the ringing up my groceries, I'm like, "Do you want two carts or three? With the two carts, you get this." I mean, I'm asking everyone. So, today, you know, and I didn't stop. Even at lunch today, I asked the UPS man that was delivering something at the restaurant that I was at, and I asked the guy behind the counter. And so, I have to tell you, though, when I was in the elevator just today, I was in the elevator and got two yeses for the three cart, then I went to the restaurant, and I got two yeses for the two cart. I literally have heard from people that are about equal. They're about 50/50 on whether we, which of the two contracts we do. I do know that overwhelmingly, everybody wanted separate yard waste, and I think we made a statement. But what I told the mayor, when she called me, it might have been the same night she called you, because I think I was fixing dinner as well, Vinnie. But when the mayor called after that first vote failed, she said, "What do you want? I mean, what can I do, and what do you want to see?" So, I did give her a list, and I said, "You know what, Mayor? We've gotta figure out how to do separate yard waste pickup. We can't just do the co-mingling in two carts. That overwhelmingly is going down, and nobody wants that." So, she said, "All right, what if we did this separate bid? Let's see." And of course, at the time, we didn't know what those bids were gonna come back, how much it was gonna cost. So, when we got bids back on the separate yard waste, and it looks like it's doable within our budget, and I also told her I don't want a tax increase. So, at this point in time, I think the mayor has delivered on what I asked for. I want a covered carts, separate yard waste, no tax increase. And as much as I have to say, I mean, just even this morning, I think West Central Sanitation is a great company. I think Don and his team are excellent people. I just, I took the companies out of it. I didn't even pay, it didn't matter. I just focused on it, and I never even mentioned the company names when I asked my neighbors or I asked people. I didn't talk about the companies. I said, "We have two choices." And I went through the two-cart with 12 weeks of yard waste, and three-carts, we have 35 weeks. So, that's what I talk to people about. So, in all honesty, I'm voting on the contract kind of blind of which company it is, because I don't really see faults with either one. At this point in time, I'm voting on what I think people in my district will be able to handle. And again, it was that third cart. I do have a lot of people saying, "I don't want those big carts," and I do remind them, "You can get, is it 45-gallon? It's half-size, right? 45-gallon?" Jim's shaking his head, "Yes." You can get the 45-gallon, and for older people that are, I think it's age 70 and above, and anybody that's disabled, we have a program now, like today. You can call, and they will actually walk to the top of your driveway and pull the garbage down. We're gonna continue that with this new garbage contract, regardless of which company gets it, or which contract we bid on. But I do think requiring three carts for everybody, or having three carts delivered, could be a problem. And we're also, the people that have the 20 bags, the 50 bags, was it the guy on the news that had 50 cans? I don't remember whose district it's in, somebody else's district. But this at least gives him the opportunity. He better put him out during the 12 weeks. But, it gives him the opportunity to have all of his yard waste picked up during those peak seasons. And I think what people don't understand either, is they can still have their yard waste picked up outside those 12 weeks, they just have to buy stickers for the bags. So, it's not that there's gonna be no yard waste, or you can, at that point, co-mingle with the garbage. So, to me, I think this gives everybody a little something that they want. We're separating the yard waste, we got unlimited. It appears with the unlimited that there's still enough compost, that Omagro can still continue the composting. You can still go buy the Omagro at Mulhalls, or Landhaws, or wherever you buy it. And so, I think in this case, we kind of got the best that we could, and I also appreciate both Jims who are sitting right here, the amount of work that you put into this contract, and also having your recommendation ways, you know, I can't overlook that, because of your expertise and the time and attention that you've put on that. And I know that you truly care about Omaha, and you want what's best for the citizens of Omaha. So, when I've been doubting and trying to figure out which contract to go with, I just hope that you know that I truly do care and listen to your opinions and appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think in the very near future, First Star, our recycling group that we work with, they probably will be coming forward and wanting money. It's automatic, because the way the recycling is. So, I take a look at that, and then if I'm saying this wrong, Jim, let me know, the three-cart would be less, $2 million less than the two-cart with the supplemental. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay. So, do you have any idea what the First Star is gonna cost us?
No, we don't know at this time what First Star is gonna cost us. We could run the numbers, but we don't know quite what that's gonna cost.
But it's gonna go up.
It's gonna go, recycling, no matter who our provider is, is gonna go up.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. So, as I look at this, I see we have an opportunity here, because I hear people say that wanna save money, but we're sort of discounting that now. $2 million, to me, a year, seems like a chunk of money. First Star is going to be asking for more. I just, thank you, Jim. I think that tells me we really ought to give this some thought. As I said earlier, David doesn't always beat Goliath, and I get that. But I want to make sure that some of the things we're stating here gets out in the public. So, when there are issues, they'll know, at least some of us, not all of us, I shouldn't say some of us, but at least we're looking at the cost factor. Thank you.
Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me start off by saying, I guess, when I, the last time this issue came up, and the last time we were talking about a garbage contract, I was on that side of the cameras. And I was sort of chuckling at the council members, and never thinking that I would be one myself, and I was sitting here with this issue. Let me, first of all, thank both companies, because you all put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, gave us a lot of information. Thank the Public Works Department and everybody that was involved. I also want to thank my colleagues, because this was not a picnic by any stretch of the imagination. But one of the things that I am concerned about when we talk about composting and yard waste, is one of the issues that councilmember Palermo brought up, and that is, you know, Omagro exists, but Omagro is not making money, and Omagro is closed more than it's open. And, you know, we recently introduced legislation, several of us on this council introduced legislation to address the plastic bag issue, because there are those of us on this council who are concerned about the environment, and what the environment is going to be if we don't be proactive about addressing it. So, while I have concerns about Omagro and composting, and whether, you know, we can actually accomplish that, which I'm not sure about, but I think it's important for us to at least, for the record, talk about how we feel about, and our concern, and our important feelings about the environment, and our city, state, and nation, and around the world. And I went with FCC primarily, you know, because if there were some issues that came up, it was my feeling that perhaps maybe they would be the best ones to handle it if there were some glitches and so forth. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that, we have to make a decision very soon, because they've got, whoever it is, got to build buildings. They've got to put in, since we're using natural gas on the trucks, they have to build those stations for that natural gas. So, we've got to move on this, and we can't delay it much any longer. I was convinced about, I was convinced that both companies were going to provide jobs, especially for, you know, the district that I come from and that I represent. I feel, though, that FCC might do a better job of doing that, but in any event, I thank both companies. I have talked extensively with both companies. It's just that my feeling at this point, that, you know, FCC, the two-carts, and the unlimited yard waste is the best way to go. And I say unlimited yard waste, because I still have significant concerns about Omagro and the Omagro facility, and what that's going to look like three or four years from now, especially with the costs that continue to rise. That's my thoughts, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Gray. Councilmember Harding.
I'm sorry, I just can't help myself. Couple of closing comments, I guess. One is to pick up on what councilmember Gray was just saying. I don't view this as kind of a static situation. I want to work with, you know, whoever the contractor is going forward to take advantages of technological changes that might come along in the period of time, because as councilmember Festerson said, you know, 10 years is a long time, and 20 years is even longer. So, I want to make sure that we all understand that this is not something that we're gonna pass today and think nothing about for the next 10 years. It's gonna be something that, you know, I'll commit to, and I know the rest of us will as well, to make sure that we're working on, you know, looking at ways to make improvements or amendments if needed as this contract goes along. Also, it was, I wanted to, I know it's repeating, but thank both members of the council, and Public Works, and council staff. I want to go back to the point being made that, you know, when this was first brought up and did not pass, I think it's a great process that we went through. I mean, it was not only engaging among ourselves as a council, but it was a pure public process, and it was engaging the citizens, and talking with the citizens, and listening to their concerns, and also knowing that there were wide and varied opinions as to how to move forward, which also gives us a foreshadowing of, as someone mentioned earlier, there will be issues as we move forward, and we get into this contract, and deliver carts, and figure out who gets special pickups and who doesn't. There will be those growing pains. So, regardless of who we select today, know that there will be those growing pains, but also there's a commitment, both on the part of the council and the part of that contractor, to work those issues out. So, on behalf of all involved, as well as the citizens for your involvement, thank you for helping us make this a better process, and I think get to a better solution at the end of the day.
Thank you, councilmember Harding. No further lights. I have some comments to make myself in terms of this journey, in that I would echo the sentiments of my colleagues. the sentiments of my colleagues in offering my sincere thanks to WCS and to FCC and your teams who represented your companies with professionalism in a distinguished manner. To me, it's, 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 your participation, as difficult as this bin, you're the ones on the hot seat feeling the pressure as to who gets picked, and we're feeling the pressure as to who we answer to and what they, what our constituents expect. And not unlike other council members, I was a couple of weeks ago at a restaurant with my wife and in the span of one, one meal, had scooters, trash, and roads brought up by different people on the same meal. And my wife commented about it. I said, well, I guess we should have gotten takeout. But it is what it is when you're in these seats. People feel like they're, they have access to you and they feel like they can approach you, and that's a good thing in our city, that, that people feel that way and can share with you and feel like they, let you know how they feel about things. The constituents of District Three have expressed very clearly to me that they wish for me to support a three-cart system with thirty-five weeks of separate yard waste collection for composting. And so my hope, because I sit here somewhat powerless to not be able to make motions, was that there might be a motion to consider a three-bin alternative, because I didn't feel like I could vote on a two-cart seasonal unlimited yard waste collection proposal first without having tried to, to see what the outcome would be on the three-bin system. Admittedly, I thought that the best company in terms of the, being most likely to have the least amount of issues, because all companies have issues, was, was FCC because of the amount of resources they're committing to this, in equipment and staff. You know, second place, Mr. Williamson, doesn't mean you've got a questionable organization. It just means that it's just, with me, there was a little more risk as I, as I viewed your company. But I'm in a quandary, because the motion on the floor is a two-bin with seasonal unlimited yard waste. And unless there's a motion to the contrary, I just want everyone to know out there that I would have, I would have loved to have seen a vote on Amendment C. Councilmember Gray.
Mr. President, I've sat in that chair, and I know what it feels like when you can't make a motion and you want to do something. So out of fairness, I will, well, I don't know if I can or not, because I, I made the second for your motion. So I don't know that, Madam Clerk, that I can make a motion to, make a substitute motion. Just because I understand the President's position and I understand the fact that, that, that you can't sit there and make motions, and, and that sometimes is, that sometimes handcuffs you in a way that I wouldn't describe as being unfair, but it does give you an unfair advantage. So, you know, for purposes of respecting our President and the fact that he can't do that, I would make a substitute motion for fifty-eight C.
Second. If there's no further lights, roll call.
Harding.
No.
Melton.
No.
Pauls.
No.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion failed, one to six.
Roll call.
And this is on the original motion. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, four to three.
Next item.
Item fifty-nine, an ordinance to amend Section thirty-three dash four-six to change the number of permanent inhabitants needed in a single unit to exceed the established solid waste limit from eight to five.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item sixty, an ordinance awarding a contract to FCC for OPW five-three-six-four-one for the yard waste collection, spring and fall, with an estimated annual cost of one million four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for a five-year term. A's communication received from West Central Sanitation.
Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So the two-cart system has passed, and what we're on now is the supplemental yard waste bid. I did not support the, the two-cart system, but I will support a supplemental yard waste bid to at least get that involved in the mix and make sure that's, that is happening the least eight to twelve weeks, spring and fall, so that we do have some of that happening. I do want to mention two letters we received today, maybe just get a verbal then from FCC and, and City, I suppose, Mr. Tyler, as to these letters that were submitted for the record on this item today, that I think acknowledge this is only a five-year contract and, and that, and that's all it is, which concerns me. So I want to be reassured of our commitment to a ten-year matchup of yard waste unlimited removal with what is now the two-cart system. And there's two letters here that I want you to, to reference that I think are saying that, but I just want you to confirm that on the record, even though all we're voting on is a five-year, I think you're committing to ten years in these letters. Is that correct?
Yeah, just, with Omah Public Works, as, as I stated before earlier in my testimony, when we put that contract out, it was our full intention that it's a ten-year contract. The five-year plus a five-year extension, I think, goes along the lines to where one of the council members said, ten years is a really, really long time, and there are things that can change. So we want to make sure that we're doing the best thing. We're providing that long-term contract, and we're committed to ten years unless of some really unforeseen circumstances happens wherein the best interest from the city, we're, we're not going to renew that contract.
And, and FCC representative too, please, if you would come down and address that same question.
Mr. Sands, would you come and yield to some questions, please?
The question was, just to repeat, your commitment to the, what would be the ten-year yard waste supplemental bid, as indicated in the letters we received today.
Any go-sun, thirty-one player point, spring Texas? Yes, we have no problem with that.
Okay. And again, that's not what we're voting on today, but I want to make it clear and get that on the record, that that's my expectation, because that's a significant part of what I think makes this more tenable for my constituents. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, but we have Councilmember Gray who wishes to be heard.
I am? Okay, I'm in.
Unless you had twitched finger.
That's a bad trigger.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second. I would say along those lines, if we're going to have, now that the council as a whole has expressed its will to have the two-bin collection, it absolutely makes sense to try to get some seasonal unlimited yard waste along with that. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item sixty-one, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for midtown crossing at Turner Park located east of Thirty-third and Farnham Streets to allow temporary signage to exceed thirty-two square feet and to allow a three-year permit. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item sixty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One public hearing will be held for items sixty-two to sixty-four. Ordinances to amend the urban design element, the land use element, and transportation element of the Omaha Master Plan to include transit-oriented development. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on items sixty-two through sixty-four begin at this time. Council-recognized Planning Director David Fanslaw first.
Good afternoon. We are here, I'm here to support or to answer any questions related to items sixty-two to sixty-four, which are amendments to our master plan that discuss and put in place some guidance for TOD development in relationship to the BRT line that will be in, en route and in place in 2020 along Dodge Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any proponents?
Eric England, Planning Department. Mr. President, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to ask for your support in these amendments to the City Master Plan. TOD is development centered around or within walking distance of a transit station and includes greater density, mix of uses, and pedestrian scale design. As you're aware, Orbit has begun to start operations in 2020. To prepare for and take advantage of the anticipated increased development around BRT stations, the Planning Department identified the need to review and develop future land use policies. So back in 2016, we were awarded a technical assistance grant. Leading up to two thousand, or June of 2018, we developed an action team that consisted of members of the Planning Department, Public Works Department, Metro Transit, Greater Omaha Chamber, and the Mayor's Office. They began meeting monthly. In August of last year, we developed a stakeholder group that included neighborhood representatives, developers, designers, and other stakeholders, and also began to meet monthly. We held eleven public meetings from November of last year to May of 2019. This is the first phase. These amendments to the master plan is the first phase to support and encourage transit-oriented development. And then the second phase, which would be coming later to the City Council, would be to develop and propose specific TOD regulations. So ask for your support.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Maybe I can say good evening. Scott Dobby, Executive Director of Omaha by Design, here in support of the items sixty-two to sixty-four. Omaha by Design was really pleased to participate as one of a number of stakeholders in the process. Again, as we can attest, it's been a very thorough process with, involving city departments and neighborhood representatives, design and industry professionals, as well as business owners along the road, and of course, the public outreach. We commend the Planning Department for their foresight in leveraging what were some significant grant awards, both in the Orbit bus rapid transit that's coming to, to Omaha in 2020, as well as the technical assistance grant that was awarded. Quite simply, transit-oriented to development is, is smart development policy. It acknowledges the mutually beneficial relationship between transit, high-quality transit, and mixed-use, walkable, pedestrian-scale environments. It accommodates growth while respecting neighborhood context in areas that, as we see, are already experiencing significant change and, and market demand for kind of a less car-dependent lifestyle. And critically, and as set forth in the amendments, transit-oriented development supports equitable access to jobs, education, and opportunities. Finally, transit-oriented development, as we see it, is not only a wise choice for the neighborhoods and these corridors that will be served by enhanced transit, but it is also a win for the city as a whole, as it encourages private investment that increases our tax base by making the most efficient use of our existing infrastructure. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I respectfully ask that you would support the amendments.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Since I snuck it out this long, Ted Zetsman, Nala Companies, two-two-eight-five, South Sixty-seventh Street. And as an active developer in the community, we were able to be on the stakeholder committee, and we appreciate that. Transit-oriented development is something we're seeing around the country in other markets that we work in. We see it in trade publications, so we think it's an exciting opportunity for Omaha. We also want to commend the Planning Department, because they did an excellent job of engaging developers, as well as the public, in both the concept and discussion of potential code changes. We believe that TOD is a, will encourage redevelopment in the city along the Orbit line and, and also maximize, you know, the investment that the city's making. And lastly, I would say, if, you know, if it's approved, we look forward to working with, continue working with the city on the code changes. That would make this a reality in Omaha. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zetsman. Are there any other proponents?
Joy Willoughby with Metro Transit here in Omaha, seventy-seven-twenty North Hundred-and-Sixtieth Circle, Bennington, Nebraska. Obviously, we as an agency are putting in quite the investment into the new Orbit line, and we think that these changes will not only benefit the Orbit line itself, but also the future of transit here in Omaha, where we'll be able to expand more BRT lines with this type of, of philosophy. So we are for these changes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of what we're doing here. And in fact, Mr. Palermo and I joined Mr. Dobby and others to visit other communities who have done this really well and have seen the positive impacts of transit-oriented development, both in terms of transit and development itself. And I know what we're doing here is just today, the urban design element and the land use element and the transportation element, but at some point, I guess, Mr. Fanslaw or Mr. England, you'll be coming back to the council with a more detailed code update and code changes that reflect transit-oriented development in terms of our zoning code, correct?
Yeah. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Yeah, of course, this is the master plan amendments that then will set the stage for code amendments that obviously get in more detail about what kind of design, what kind of development along the line. Those are forthcoming.
That's probably a few months away yet.
Probably. Yeah, well, yeah, end of the year, beginning of the year, somewhere around there.
Okay. And I'm blessed to have the bus rapid transit system, when it gets constructed, coming through a large swath of my district. In fact, those stations are getting built as we speak. The West Roads parking ride has already started to be constructed, so that's good to see. But that being the case, I've had probably the most amount of questions on this so far as it applies to the bus rapid transit system and the neighborhoods that are along that line, in particular, the stretch of Dodge that is, you know, potentially most impacted by a new zoning-type approach.
Sure.
And their questions have been, you know, does this change anything from my current zoning? Does this change anything I can do with my house? Will this change density concerns? Will this inspire necessarily apartment buildings in our neighborhood or, you know, things like that that could be of a concern to, to certain neighborhoods? And I think the answer to that's no. This does not, this, this today, and your zoning code coming later, does not proactively change anyone's zoning, correct?
That's the road we're headed down, correct? We're, you know, we're having discussions on how to implement and what, and how to then to, what kind of code to put in place and then how to implement that code. But yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about that, and I wouldn't necessarily think or believe at this point that we are going to proactively rezone people's property. We're going to offer options, and we're going to be clear what those options are. We're aware that, and it's a long stretch from downtown to the West Roads along Dodge Street, and there's different contexts along that entire line. So that's what we're working on, is identifying and realizing and recognizing how the neighborhoods are different along the line and what works best for those neighborhoods and to give them options in the future.
Yeah. I think that's important to state, because there will be stretches along that, along Dodge Street where this is really appropriate and will be supported by everyone. There are some stretches where it won't be supported by everyone and it might give concern to neighborhoods right there. So having that flexibility is important going forward. I think that's all the questions I have for now, but do look forward to approving this today and coming back with that code later and continuing to engage the neighborhoods around it.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Fanslaw, you might want to stick around. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And I know this is, is the high-level, public hearing on the high-level plan changes, but you know, I think, what I'm going to ask you about.
Think I do.
Ensuring that if we have this mass transit route and it's going to be given the greatest opportunity to succeed in fulfilling the, many of the objectives, including, among those, providing people both who are choice riders, meaning people who choose to ride, don't have to ride mass transit, but choose to anyway, in, in light of taking an alternative transportation form, which we want to encourage.
Sure.
As though, as well as supporting those who wish to promote development for affordable housing along the route, which would be even a greater goal accomplished, because the people who need public transit to get around, we want them to be close to the transit routes, right?
Absolutely.
And we know contextually, as you go around Dodge, as you move from east to west, the density goes through various iterations, right?
Correct.
So if a developer were to, let's just say hypothetically, in the, an area contextually that were deemed appropriate by the Planning Department, the Planning Board, and the council for
for high-density, multifamily, or mixed-use, multifamily, office or commercial, whatever it is, along the route, before the code changes come and choose to come through either PUD or PUR, with these adoptions, if we vote to approve them, that is something I think the Planning Department, Planning Board, and Council could consider favorably in implementing even in advance of the code.
Yeah, correct. In fact, we've had a couple of cases along the route now that, as we've worked with the development community and a particular developer, we've kept what the TOD might be when it comes in code form and we've built some of those parameters into the few PURs that have been approved through the process along the line.
Right. Because we've had, with the mere announcement that the Orbit was coming, we've had the Duke at 46th and Dodge. We now have the one across the street that we just approved. We have the Sage Capitals project at 49th and Dodge and we have the McClay. We have J Development. We have a whole number of these coming. Some already being constructed, but only one of those I've seen so far, and that's the Clary Development One just east of the new hotel at about 44th and Dodge, that is targeted at reduced rent populism tenant. So it's of immense importance, I think, to the city and the prosperity of workforce centers like the Med Center, like downtown, like other places along the route, that people who are in the ridership by necessity category be closest to the mass transit line so they can access it. So that's music to my ears.
I would agree with you and that would be ideal, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
No further lights. Next item.
One public hearing will be held for items 65 and 66, ordinances to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to change the title of the employment classification for right-of-way agent one to real estate specialist one, to change the employment classification for right-of-way agent two to real estate specialist two, and to add the employment classification for real estate specialist three. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on items 65 and 66 begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 67, an ordinance to approve an agreement with CHI Health to provide an employee assistance program for a period of three years from June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2022.
The public hearing on item 67 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 68, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $45,382.62 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 Stop Violence Against Women Grant.
The public hearing on item 68 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 69, an ordinance to approve an amendment to an agreement with the City of Portland, Oregon in the amount of $9,838 and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant.
The public hearing on item 69 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 70, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Bennington for the city prosecutor's office to provide certain prosecutorial services.
The public hearing on item 70 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 71 through 86, do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:14.[1787.51]